Jacob, were you gonna talk during public discussion?
I can.
Okay, I'm just, it might be, just unless, if you have other things to do in town, like it might be a couple hours, just so you know.
No, yeah, I was aware when I looked at the agenda, it might be a little.
I just didn't want you to sit there thinking you're gonna hear discussion or something soon, so.
Nope, no, I kind of thought, I'm just, I don't like walking into the meetings late.
Nope, that's fine.
I just go and sit there.
That's fine.
It is eight o'clock. All of you ready? I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public discussion this morning? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and minutes dated February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Motion by Garmin. Second by Wactor. Any discussion on the motion? Everyone had a chance to look through it? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous. And then we have, need a motion to approve claims. Take this minute to look at them in your packet. Whenever you're ready, I'll take a motion. Any questions?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Haas. Second.
The second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion on the claims? Questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Acknowledge the budget status report. Everyone had a chance to look at that? Send your board packet. Okay. Any questions on that? Otherwise, we can let the record reflect, we acknowledge those. And then we are up to discussion, decision to approve twenty-twenty-five preventative maintenance contract for Cassuth County EMS. Good morning, Phil.
Good morning. Do you want me to explain this, or just ask questions, or?
Well.
I can go through it, but.
Give us an overview of what it is.
The first item is the purchase of the ACR four, which is a child restraint system. So we have a Cassuth County EMS Association, which consists of the representative from each of the services in the county, and then myself, and then, and part of that is also the medical director, hospital rep, et cetera, et cetera. We decided to do a project this year for these child restraint systems, because we don't have a good way to, to secure our, our small patients, and it goes from newborn to a hundred pounds, so it has a pretty wide range that this works for. It works right for a cot, it's a way for us to secure these small people, and so if we are in an accident or something, they're are secured properly. It's kind of like a, it's not really shaped like a car seat, but it, it turns our cot into a car seat, is essentially what it does. So, we decided to do a grant, and, and the grant was focused on safety, so this was one part of that grant. We were awarded the grant money. It's a three-part grant, the first part was these child restraint systems. The second part is safety vests that we're putting in all the ambulances as well. And then the third part is, was just simply a, a good flashlight that's exactly the same to go along trucks. This is the only part of the project that's gonna be over the five thousand dollar limit, the total project was about thirteen thousand. So, I had to run this through our budget to write the grant, because that'd be through a government agency or a nonprofit. So I wrote the grant through Cassuth County. We were awarded the grant with the remaining funds that we did receive the grant to be paid by the Cassuth County EMS Association. So, this won't impact our budget, it will be, monies not from tax dollars, and not from revenue, it'll be from the grant or the association paying for this. We, we have fourteen ambulances in the county, so there's fourteen of these devices that we will purchase, to put one in every truck.
I see quantity on there, thirteen.
We had ordered one to demonstrate that prior to us ordering them to take to the association meeting. So to complete it, made thirteen more.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
Okay. But first is the maintenance contract, and then we'll have a separate motion for the.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Child restraint.
I read the wrong line.
That's all right.
The preventive maintenance contract is something we do every year, and it's on all of our, equipment that's, I would say, battery-powered or electronic within our ambulance, like our power load, our Lucas device, which is our CPR device, our monitors, our ventilators, our suction devices, anything that is as wearable parts as electronic. For example, on our ventilators, they do actually dismantle those, they put in all new seals, all new gaskets, all new home rings, and make sure everything is functional, they recertify that they're providing the proper ventilation. Same with our monitors, those are all gone through to make sure that the ventilation part is working, blood pressure parts, everything is working properly. And they research by the year, and then if you have issues in between this year, they come back and, and they take care of it, or we send stuff in. So, that's something we do annually, we use to split that up per manufacturer on our equipment. When we switched to this preventative maintenance company, we, we cut our cost on this almost fifty percent. And it's worked well, it worked well last, last year was the first year that we used this, this particular company, and it's worked well.
Okay.
And this is just your equipment, this doesn't include all of this?
Correct, this is just our six ambulances. We've asked other services in the county if they wanted to be part of it, and here's the price while they're in the county. So far, we haven't got any of them to jump on.
Okay, any other questions? On the maintenance contract? If not, I'll entertain a motion, Howard, you have something?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then. Motion by Stecker. Second by Haas. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. And then we can entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the ACR four ambulance child restraint for all ambulances in Cassuth County. Motion by Haas, second by Stecker. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
That was Haas and Stecker.
Thanks, Phil.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Okay. We are up to discussion, decision to set the date and time for the tax levy public hearing for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. And this, we can set for March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five at one P M.
I did put a calendar in your packet, so you could see the dates, so that we're ten and twenty. So if we set it for, March twenty-fifth, it will be published the twelfth and the thirteenth, the notices will go out on the fifteenth, the public hearing will be the twenty-fifth. Then on the first of April, if we set a date and time for the budget hearing, that'll be published the ninth and the tenth, with the budget hearing on April twenty-second.
Okay.
I also did put, and we can talk about this when we get to the budget part, but I did this morning, put the proposed tax levy notice, what that looks like finished in your board folder, so, it doesn't have the date and time in there, because I was waiting for you to approve that this morning, but it does have the information in there.
Okay. Okay. Well, does anyone want to make that motion for twenty-fifth at one o'clock? Garmin makes the motion, I'll second it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, and then we have discussion, decision, payment in lieu of taxes for North Iowa Regional Housing Authority, Maplewood Apartments, and I'll go on to Iowa.
We get this every year.
Yep, yep.
From them, and so just part of our drainage claims.
Okay.
But this is the.
Okay. Does someone want to make that motion? You want to understand what it's for?
I read it, and I certainly understand it, but you guys do it every year, have experience making the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, motion by Wactor. Sir second. Second by Stecker. Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
I heard you say you do it every year, it's, it's not an optional thing, it's not a gracious thing, you just do it.
Yeah, it is optional, they send it to us every year to approve, so it, it is, you don't have to approve it, but it has been approved since way before I've been here.
How is this different from any other?
Because it's North Iowa Regional Housing, and they're a government entity. So it's, we work with them on assistance programs and different things, that's.
How is it different from any other landlord out there, I mean, I'm, I'm not being.
That is the difference, my, I guess, from what I understand.
But they're using, they, they use whatever they have to support what program? Is, is it, the rent's so low that it barely pays for itself, and I can't afford the taxes, or?
It's pretty, I mean, it's low income house.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
Well, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. And I sign this on the front here?
Yes, please.
Okay, then we have, I believe Bailey, you're in for the discussion, decision, continuation of longevity for Cassuth County jailers longer than twenty years.
So, I can explain how this started, Bailey, if you want me to, so, back several years ago, the jailers and deputies had a union, and everything fell under their union contract. They, that union was dismissed, or I don't know what the correct terminology is. But after that, there wasn't anything in writing as far as longevity, or working hours, or anything like that. Their union contract said that they, their longevity was up to thirty years. Our county handbook says longevity is twenty years. So now we have, with some of the jailers, we have one jailer that's actually already over twenty-five years, and has been getting that longevity, and we have, I think, three this year that are gonna be coming to that twenty-five years, but there's nothing in writing that says that they get it past the twenty years, so we're hoping to correct that this morning.
And I did bring a copy of the union contract, if you want me to see that and set that. And then, a list of the dealers, how much time that they've had, because I believe that will hit.
Yeah, 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 so we just need to get it official and get it in writing, and then I suppose have a conversation if that'll change for any other employees or not.
When did they leave the union?
Oh, my God.
Before I got here.
Twenty, okay.
Three to two years.
Is it been two years?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says in there.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Yeah, they're contracted.
Sheriff's left as well, same time.
Okay, okay.
But the sheriffs are now.
Or deputies.
Or, yeah, the deputies are now voting, but the, the jailers do not, they are not forming a union, so they, theirs will fall under the county handbook.
Okay.
So.
So right now, there's long, I, I've seen it, in different, the longevity for what, what pay, what years of service.
Up to twenty years, right?
Yeah, it's five cents, five years. So, five, ten, fifteen.
Is there something else, language for other departments who are more than twenty years?
No, not at this time.
We did discuss that the last year.
Yeah.
About making changes to longevity, I mean, just because, I don't know, nickel every five years isn't, it's been that way forever.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, so. Yeah.
So.
And we had the discussion of extending it beyond twenty years as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, now the sheriff's department's not represented by a union, or the jailers, excuse me.
Jailers, I know.
Not, so really, what we're doing is not, it doesn't have anything to do with it's, it's special to the jailers, it just should be everybody.
That's kind of where we were going last year, but.
But first, we need to approve, to have it in writing somewhere that it says they continue to get those benefits, because.
Because they're already on that track.
Yeah, they're on that track, they're getting it, but there's nowhere that it says they should be.
So they've been writing it since the union dissolved, even though they shouldn't?
For one jailer.
For one jailer's met that.
Yeah, and he might, he might have received that before they, you know, I don't know when he hit his twenty-five years, but he might have received it before that union contract was up. It's only been a year and a half since that union contract's been out, and nobody has gotten there yet. But this year, there will be, which is why we need to, correct it.
I think it's a good idea to correct it, but then I think it also needs to be for everyone, you know.
I mean.
I mean, that's honestly, I know that's not what's on the agenda today, but I do, I think that we need to have a conversation about the rest of it then, but I think definitely.
I was gonna say the same thing, so, yep, yep.
I mean, just longevity as a whole, I mean, we didn't talk about it that much this year, but, it has been brought up before, and I guess, I think we need to have a bigger conversation about that, because the requests for higher wages because of years of service, the only place we can pay that is in longevity. So, I mean, it's, it's a big subject, but if we're gonna talk about it, it, it needs a, a bit of time to be discussed, because it's not a small topic.
Yep.
There's a lot of calculations that need to be done with it, and I've done some of those before, but I didn't do them this year.
Well, can we, I mean, you want, you guys want to put that on the agenda for the near future too?
I think we should be discussing, we're gonna point to go forward and make a motion today for the jailers portion, we need to follow up with the rest.
Sure. Is that something we can do next week?
Is, is there a certain timeframe that this would be effective for any of that?
Well, most of my jailers will hit their anniversary dates, this pay period or next pay period.
So you prefer it effective today?
Well, as soon as possible.
Yeah, just as long as we're following up with the rest next week, there's no reason to put it off, I don't think.
Yeah.
Just anniversary dates are really hot right now, so.
Sure, sure. Yep.
I'll make that motion, if we want to go forward with the motion.
To extend it to thirty years.
Yeah.
Garmin makes the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's a discussion.
It could, it should just be every five years, no matter how long you've been here, but, I don't know why you would stop, yeah.
Yeah, because we have had employees that have been here, I mean, for thirty-five, forty years, yeah, I mean, that's something that we should be proud of.
Ron's been here thirty-one, two, something like that, so, he could very well hit it, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, certain employees have been here a long time.
So do you want to just, to extend it past twenty years?
Every five years of.
Five, seven, seventy-five years?
And, and leave it at that?
Past twenty years.
What do you have, Rachel?
Yeah, we got second.
Um, right now, I just have to extend it past twenty years, uh, receiving ten cents every five years.
Five, five cents every five.
Oh, sorry, I don't know where I get ten cents. Five cents every five years.
You could just say, like, the current using current schedule, because it's.
Twenty years.
Past twenty years using.
Extend, extend to current schedule.
Okay.
Just replicate it outward.
Okay, so if it's just.
I wonder if you think it's clear.
So if it just says to extend longevity for Cassuth County jailers past twenty years, extending the current schedule. Is that good?
Yeah, that sounds fine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Second second. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bailey.
Have a good day.
Have a good day.
Okay, Josh, you wanna call Doug? Please?
Hey Doug, we are up to you.
We've got.
I can't believe it's March.
March.
Crazy.
What is today, the fourth?
Fourth.
Fourth. Here we go. Everyone's signed, drinking like they are.
The weather doesn't sound very good right now, does it?
No, no. Doesn't sound good for tonight.
No, I know.
I look at this evening, it's gonna get raining.
Careful with the blizzard here.
No, I don't either.
Yeah, I think it's funny, though, it's the first of the season.
I don't think it's funny, I think it's irritating.
Yeah, you go the whole winter.
Ironic would be the more appropriate word.
Yeah.
We get, we get through December, January, February, then March, which has blizzard.
Morning Doug.
Good morning, everyone.
We are up to review and approve secondary road gravel crushing quotes, when you are ready.
Yes, we requested quotes to crush gravel, requested quotes from Purpleton Escavating, Redding's gravel, and Escavating Stratford gravel, and Wright Materials Sanding gravel. We received two quotes, one from Redding's and one from Stratford. Do have, tab sheets, if the board would like to write some notes. Uh, we are, we requested quotes to crush sixty thousand tons at Maguire Pit, which is right north of Irvington, and Roethler's gravel pit, which is three miles west of one sixty-nine, it's more than that, and then a little bit north. Are you with anyone, are you with Redding's, yes. Is your name Joe? Yes. Sorry, we do have a representative from Redding's gravel and excavating with us, Joe is here. I'll go ahead and open up those quotes. And I guess, I said sixty thousand ton at the Maguire Pit, fifty thousand ton at Roethler's, and we do have some miscellaneous asphalt that we have hauled into the Irvington pit, and the quote would also need to crush that material as well. And I'm just gonna read the total, total quote. We do note that the lowest total of all crushing operations listed will be used to work Cassuth County crushing. Uh, this is from Stratford gravel, and signed by Monica Becker. Their price for all the work is seven hundred eleven thousand five hundred dollars. And, from Redding gravel and excavating. And they have a signed quote as well, their bit, their quote is three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars and no cents. Three twenty-nine, zero, 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 zero.
For everything? For everything?
That's for, that's the total, yes. So I will be visiting a little bit with John and Chuck, Joe, Joe will probably be visiting with him before I will, but we'll line up and get that gravel crushing going, so, thank you.
Very good.
Thank John. Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Explain the, the difference?
That's what they did, I mean, I don't know if it's the amount of work that somebody already has, Redding gravel and excavating. Their units, two dollars and ninety cents per ton for the gravel, and ten dollars for the asphalt, which asphalt is a little bit less in quantity, and they probably need a different crusher in order to do that, so that would be why there's a disparity between the gravel and the asphalt. Stratford gravel, six forty-five at, at the Maguire Pit, six twenty-five at, at Roethler, and twelve dollars for the asphalt, so it's the way that that would have been, why those are, I, I don't know. But, the two dollars and ninety cents is more what we've been paying, actually, I think it's a couple, couple dimes. I think last year was about two dollars and sixty cents, so, this year, it's up a little bit.
Can you?
Yes. That, that's my memory, I guess, I.
Oh, okay.
I gotta make sure, I could not look to see, I gotta see what that is, I'll, I will let you know, Howard, what it was last year.
I've been, I mean, it doesn't seem like anything to do anyway. The other, and the other people?
Did not submit a quote.
Did not submit, no communication whatsoever either?
We did not. Over the last few years, we have sent the quotes out to everyone, and we've received quotes from Stratford and Redding's main.
Okay, we need a, a motion to approve those gravel crushing quotes then, or?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Haas.
Redding's.
Redding's, yep, excuse me, motion by Haas, second by Stecker. Redding's, yep. Excuse me. Motion by Haas, second by Stecker. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, uh, discussion decision approval of construction in the right of way.
Uh, we have no request for construction within the road right of way.
Okay, then we could roll into discussion with the county engineer.
Um, next week, uh, I have received a, um, agreement, a request for an agreement for, uh, detour on USA, for US eighteen construction, uh, east of Algonah, so that'll be on the agenda. Also been in communication with Nate Reefer about, uh, spraying roadsides, and I have that quote, so we'll put that on the agenda for next week, so some business, uh, for the board. Uh, we've been working on the FEMA, uh. FEMA, we have one more project, but to date we have two hundred two thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents submitted. Um, that is going through the FEMA process now for review. Uh, that dollar amount, if approved, would be reimbursed seventy-five percent from national, federal, uh, ten percent from the state, and the, and the remaining is responsibility of local governments. So, uh, we should be receiving some money. We still have one more project to submit, which I'm working on today. Um, hoping to get that done by tomorrow. Uh, we are conducting interviews at the transfer station, we're working on advertising for the engineer's office, um, working, looking at equipment, and that's kind of everything that I have.
Okay. Any questions for Doug?
Doug, can you repeat the dollar amount for FEMA, just from figures, what was that?
Two hundred two thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Great, if not, uh, thanks Doug. We are up to discussion decision evaluation of Cassuth County engineer with possible closed session per Iowa code twenty-one point five one I. And before. I, I realized that was a.
Yeah, that's always been with Doug because he's always been that, and I forgot to take it off the agenda, so that's my fault.
Uh, no worries. Uh, yeah, good point Howard. Um, okay, before we get started with the evaluation, just going to, just, I guess, set some boundaries for how to do it here. Um, I'd like if each board member could just present, um, their evaluation. I assume we have written evaluations. Um, you've, and you're welcome to hand that to Doug, following this, or if you haven't already. Um, and the last time we did an evaluation, things did not end well, and so I'd, I'd like things to be civil, I'd like conversation to be constructive, um, and if the board can present and finish their thoughts, Doug, if you have some response or things that you would like to say, um, you're welcome to, and, uh, we'll, we'll try and go about it in an orderly fashion here. Um, and, and if at any point Doug has every right to request a closed session, we can, we can do so. So, if that's clear, um, yeah, we can go forward with the evaluation then. Um, I know with Howard and Amber, you guys haven't been here all that long, so it's a little hard to.
It can be pretty quick. I've been here two months, I haven't, I haven't experienced an evaluation before. I did not see the paper thing, I saw it laying here this morning, I have not filled anything out. I don't have anything, uh, negative to say whatsoever. Doug seems to be prepared, seems to think it's been done. I think he's trying to warn us of things that are coming. I, more next year. I hope, I hope more next year. I just, I, I, I don't have, there hasn't, there's many complaints on the sweater because.
How many complaints on snow removal you get?
Yeah, for Friday. I, I just don't have it, I apologize. I'm either unprepared or have nothing to say.
Nope, no worries. So, okay, well, that's fine. Amber?
Um, I, I don't have anything negative to say. I know that, um, Doug is always prepared. Doug always communicates with us. Um, I appreciate that. I can say now and in the past, um, we have asked you to wear many different hats, and you have done so. Um, I'm sure at times that was difficult. Um, some of those hats, planning and zoning can be a big deal, and so can the, uh, self-insurance, and, you know, I can speak for the self-insurance and the fact that, um, I know that's not your engineer evaluation, but it is something that we have asked you to do. Is that okay, that I'm saying that? Um, it, we really rely heavily on accurate information, and I can say that I appreciate that, and I can appreciate all the effort that you and, you know, your staff has put in for that, and, um, I think at times, communication sometimes gets difficult with the board, and I hope going forward, and, and I'm not saying necessarily that's on you, I think there's some, um, animosity, and that can make your job more difficult, and I hope that, um, we go forward with better communication between all of us because of that. Um, but as far as anything negative, I don't have anything negative to say, and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you. May I just say one thing?
Yeah, go for it.
I mean, Amber brought up the insurance, but you've got to also Donna Neal, and Melissa and the auditor's office, um, they as well were on that, so I wanna make sure that people understand that.
Yeah, no, that's appreciated.
You bet.
And that's why I changed since I've been, than you.
No, that's.
That is appreciated, but I know it's taken a big effort out of the engineers department from the beginning, so.
Thank you.
Kylie, you're welcome to start, yep?
Thank you. Um, I did review the video from last week. Um, I didn't get through all of it, there's a little bit at the end I didn't watch, but I did watch the discussion about the evaluation. So I wanted to comment on that. Um, it was requested on January twenty-eighth, um, during the board meeting after you had left the room, and primarily what triggered that was your comment of asking for a definition for what a warm handoff was, and the attitude of how that was portrayed to the board. Um, I think that was one example of a number of times there have been remarks like that in the boardroom about a number of topics that didn't need to go to that level. Um, on January thirty-first, Carter had requested to ask me if it was okay to delay it because of getting through budget. I told him that was fine if that's what you preferred. So, um, it was delayed and I, you can probably hear some of it now, I'm still not feeling the best, but, um, with the exception of sickness, we could have done this last week. Um, so, there was no ulterior motives, and that being suggested, I guess, doesn't really sit well with me either. Um, you complimented Amber and Howard for visiting with you one-on-one in your office and talking to you about stuff, yet nearly every time I've contacted you, it's not been a positive experience. Um, especially when we disagree, whether it's a big disagreement or even something small, um, it tends to exponentially increase, um, and your standard response is that I'm one out of five supervisors, so you just wanna talk to the board as a whole. So, I don't know why I would waste my time and energy participating in conversations like that when I'm, there's little success or, um, results from something like that. And I guess another example of that is your letter July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three about a child sign. Um, I contacted you individually, like a couple times before it came to the board's agenda, about a constituent who had requested a child play sign, and I, I don't know if Amber or Howard are aware of that situation, but long story short, you did a engineer's survey that said there was five hundred feet of available site distance, and based on driving fifty-five mile an hour, four hundred and ninety-five was needed to stop, and, um, the fact that it took a board directive to install a warning sign to try and protect a child still doesn't really sit with me. Um, we've had a mechanics position open for a couple years, and, um, I, I guess I struggle with the fact that we haven't hired someone. Um, I do know there have been applicants for that position, and then we're constantly wondering why equipment's broke down and having constant conversations about equipment. I guess that's something I wish would be addressed if we hired again. Get, get that.
Yeah.
May I shut this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks Molly.
It'd be interesting, a lot of people paying attention to this, we could learn a lot more in the.
Okay, continue Doug.
Um, I guess another, another thing that I haven't brought to you one-on-one because, um, I haven't seen a lot of success in those conversations as I previously outlined, is, I mean, I've been informed of people, um, playing cards in the afternoon in the shop of the foreman, and, um, things that I don't believe should be happening on a daily basis, and, um, I don't know how some of those situations get rectified. Um, and I guess our, our monthly agenda item with the foreman coming in, seems like the last, mm, year, whatever, that has gone from them giving us an update on what's going on, different projects, what the guys are doing, to only responding if they're asked a specific question, and I guess to me that feels like that was a direction that they were given. Um, and if it's not, I, I would like that to improve. I don't, I don't think it's worth their time to come in here and say hi and then drive back, um, without any substance of a conversation. I, I do appreciate the attention to detail and being prepared with things on a regular basis, um, so I don't want it to be all negative, but I guess the main point of why I asked for this evaluation is I, I would like some of the way the discussion is handled to be addressed by the board as a whole. Um, and I guess that's, that's my highlight because.
Okay. Doug, would you like to say anything?
Not this time.
Okay. All right, thank you Kyle. Josh?
Um, yeah, just, uh, no real major complaints, um, just some things that I had heard from in, you know, the past of, uh, some employees in different, different departments have said that, um, you know, that you haven't been around, and I, like I, like I was saying, I don't know if that's true or not, I just didn't, um, just wanted to bring it up, you know, if, uh, making more attempts to go visit all the different shops in different areas, um, just make sure that, you know, they're, they're all, you know, doing good and just checking in and stuff. Um, I just, from a previous employee, I had been notified that you rarely stop out to just kinda see how things are going. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up. Um, uh, for the most part, everything else is, I mean, going pretty good. Your attention to detail here, um, the plans that you bring to us are very, uh, good, um, and brought in on time. Um, and just kinda reiterate some of what Amber had said and Kyle said, just some of the communication here in the boardroom, just, um, I feel like there's some improvement that could be had there. Um, but, and then, uh, one other comment that I had for, you know, as far as public relations, there's been a couple times that's been brought up, the, um, you were reluctant to return calls. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's just something that I wanted to just kind of address and just make sure that, you know, um, we're returning people's calls and, and, um, addressing issues, you know, in a timely manner, so. But, like I said, for the most part, it's been, I think it's been pretty good.
Thank you Josh, anything you'd like to say Doug?
Not this time.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll go ahead then. I, I, I'll just organize mine by the categories on the sheet here, and, and I'll give this to you Doug here, but, um, administration of the secondary road department, I put down that you had good management skills, how our employees come to work, work gets done. Uh, there is times that attitude with employees could improve, uh, but one thing I have seen, and, well, we haven't done an evaluation for a year and a half or a little more, and one of the concerns from, at that time, was relationship with a couple different employees, and I have seen that improve, and I appreciate your effort with that. I know it's a two-way street for communication with employees, I, I, I do appreciate that. Um, and the effort made there. As far as engineering duties and road and bridge plans, I, I think you're very organized and, and it's very well presented to the board. Uh, for engineering duties and, and road maintenance, really in the past year, year and a half, the only real complaints that I have received for road maintenance come from a territory that we're missing an employee at the moment, so it's understandable, and I don't blame you for that. Um, and much thanks also to the, to the road foreman, I, I don't really work with Bill much, but as far as Scott, I mean, Scott does an excellent job there, and, and, uh, under your management and everything too, and, and it's always very timely responses to when I, when I do call, so, I do appreciate that. As far as the annual report, budget and program, again, very organized, well-presented to the board. Uh, for supervision of construction and maintenance of secondary road projects, uh, projects done the past year, year and a half, I've, from my limited knowledge and, and just experience with them, they've turned out very nice, and I, one highlight would be the, um, blacktop, I drive it going to Fairmont quite a bit, uh, A sixteen up, up on the north end of the county, very nice, smooth road, I, I mean, just turned out really nice. I, I think better than, I don't know why that job turned out better than some others, but, but it must, conditions must have been just perfect. But, uh, um, then as far as working relationship with the board of supervisors, um, you do a fine job keeping the board informed on, on projects, and, and do appreciate that. Uh, this though, is the area that needs, I think we both know, and all of us know, it needs the most improvement. Um, just the attitude and demeanor, and some of the times that comes from the board too, but it's, again, it's a two-way street, every relationship is, but, um, and working relationship, but the attitude and demeanor on a week-to-week basis, i- it has to improve, and especially if we're gonna move forward and, and continue to work for the best, for the people of Cassuth County. Um, it, it just, it, that's what needs to improve, and I know the public and, and employees watch our videos each week, and, and often aren't impressed with how things are handled in the boardroom and, and, um, and surrounding that. So, I mean, our relationship has been tense at best, so that, I, it, it really, um, that's something for all of us to work on, and it is. Um, as far as public relations within the community and state, I know you have a good relationship with, um, with your engineers association in the state, and, and, uh, you know, I've, I've talked with other county engineers and, and they don't, and they, I haven't asked them about you. you specifically, but they've never shared any concerns or anything, or, I mean, it seems like you guys have a great relationship, so. And I, I, as far as on the constructive criticism end, I do receive a lot of complaints from the public throughout the year regarding the engineer and not so much the work that you do. And that's why this, none of this is a complaint at all, the work that you do, I think you are a very good engineer, you're a very competent engineer. And I really don't receive complaints to that end. It's the interaction when the public is working with, with you or, and that, that is something to, to improve. In the past year even, I've been involved with you on a couple of cases where it's not been handled professionally and, and we can certainly visit about that. And, but that, again, attitude towards, you know, working with the board and working with the public, that, that is really what, what needs to improve. And, because that can go a long ways. But overall evaluation, I did put down effective and competent, I think you're an effective and competent engineer in, in your work and you go above and beyond in, in certain areas of your job. You've mentioned the insurance, zoning, you've helped with that for a long time and I, I mean, that all doesn't go unnoticed and, and do appreciate your work. I mean, you've been here a long time, Cassous County has, again, we have employees that show up and, and, and the work gets done, projects get done, and things have functioned for a long time. So that's, that is appreciated, you know, like some, sometimes we can say, it's never so good, it couldn't be better, never so bad, it couldn't be worse, you know, there's always room for improvement and, and we'll, we'll move forward with better communication and hopefully better relationships as we go into the future here. Yeah, so thank you, and if you've got anything to say, you're welcome to, otherwise we can...
Carter, can I say something quick?
Sure.
About evaluation or anything, but I just want to say thanks to Doug and to you guys. Doug works very well with all of us in the courthouse. I can't speak for all of us elected officials, just for myself, I have never had an issue with Doug. We communicate very well and I think it comes down to respect. I respect him greatly because he knows what he's doing, he's always very organized, he always is very respectful, and I hope it goes both ways, and I think that speaks a lot, just having respect for somebody. He gives it back to me and, and I appreciate that very much. So I can't imagine working with a better engineer than Doug.
Thank you.
Sure, may I just say a couple of things?
Absolutely.
When you're, when a person's in a management position, there are decisions that have to be made. And when people request things and I answer a way that they do not like, people may view that as being negative. And they may comment to certain people that I do not do things. I try to use engineering judgment whenever we're doing construction and maintenance, and sometimes that engineering judgment is taken, and there's other times where it's not, and by the board of supervisors. And when that happens, when there are reasons not to do things, and yet the board doesn't listen to the county engineer, it does, it's frustrating on my part. So I hope the board understands that. And the other thing that I'd like to say is, my door is always open. And I answer the phone whenever I get a phone call. So if you have situations that arise, there's always two sides to a story. And if it involves secondary road department, try to get that secondary road department's side of the story, county engineer's side of the story. As far as the road foreman, the road foreman always came in to discuss drainage repairs that the board of supervisors had assigned to the road department. There is no directive from the county engineer to not, for the board, for the road foreman to not discuss things with the board of supervisors. However, I would like the board of supervisors to ask those questions. I don't expect my foreman to bring up information to the board of supervisors. So if you'd like to know about something that goes on in the road, in the road department, that is your opportunity to ask the road foreman. As far as car playing, I will be checking on that and I will be checking on that soon. I'm not aware, no one's ever said anything to me about that, but I will be checking in on that. That's the first I've heard of that, right now. And I want everyone to know that. And I don't know if any other board members, if that's been discussed with any other board members, but I will be checking in on it. That's all that I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Dan.
You have a great day.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sure, if you have any good news. Thank you.
I gotta print my out.
Pardon me?
I gotta print my out.
You can send it to me. You can send it to me as well. All right, thank you.
Have a great day.
You bet, you guys too. I was going to come up with that SOR ordinance workshop.
Sure.
If you would.
Yep, yep, we can do that.
Thank you.
I did let Cory know that we were, be discussing it too. He, he had some other obligations, but just so he was aware, I'll let him know.
Very good, thanks.
Yep. Yeah, five-minute break and we'll get Marge. We'll use the restroom or whatever.
You said five minutes?
Yeah, probably closer.
Maybe I should have said ten. Yeah, no, no, it's not. A generous five-minute break.
I, I just twitch and then I won't stop. You ever get those?
No, I don't think I do.
Should maybe get that checked out.
Well, I don't know. Issues that do come up, they certainly change over time, come and go and say, and you get used to and.
Yeah.
Like my problem is.
The, the getting older part, and I know I keep, I say that jokingly because I'm only thirty-five, but I do turn thirty-six this year, so. No, I, yeah. Getting older and learning new things about your body's changing, you never get used to it, do you?
No.
It takes a long time. I mean, if you had anything like what I had, I mean, it just took a long time just to be well.
Yeah.
I was about to enter the world for like two, three days, Tuesday morning with worship that I was going to try and get on electronically, but I was, I wasn't able to sleep most of the night and then I think I was in and out of sleep between like six and seven-thirty and, and then I was actually getting to the point where I kind of felt like I could sleep and I was like, I'm not even going to try, so.
Kind of figured, because I think Carter texted you to see if you can, this is nothing like.
I woke up, tried to respond to text messages and stuff, but yeah, I, I mean.
Sometimes you just gotta rest.
Yeah, I, I've not been, and the worst part of it was, those were the nicest days we've had and how many.
You couldn't do anything.
I felt miserable, I didn't leave the house for several.
Why are we having a lizard call? It's just crazy.
Yeah, it is crazy.
Yeah, I tried to get kind of back up and doing some stuff, but I could tell I'm not in the shape I was a month ago or two weeks ago.
I can't get it to get past my ears, like mine is stuck in my ears, I have the ear infection.
Oh, yeah.
It's just so painful.
And I'm still taking meds once a day, I've been on a phone plug for a while. The stuff I had been prescribed and started on, it was seeming to make progress and then it was like it turned around and it was like back up in my sinuses and, and I was still taking the drugs and couldn't get rid of it, so then I took some more and I'm kind of doubling up now and that's keeping it manageable for now, but if I go past twelve hours, I can feel it coming back right away.
Yeah.
So I know I'm not.
Every time, like every solarte, it's piece starts moving up a little further and further. I noticed, you don't even have a counselor here, so you think you're getting larger, but it's probably actually. On that note, we're going to come back to drainage.
Okay.
All right, let's, let's go ahead with, we've got discussion, decision, adjustment to assessment schedules for DD twenty, main two and three. Okay, yeah, good, yeah, good morning. Do I see you put this on the agenda, so? Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have the whole material in front of you?
I'm getting it right now.
You can look at the map. Basically what William Goshen, Joe Well did back in, I think, two thousand and three or four, they put in a twenty-four inch dual wall, plastic, smooth wall main, and you can see that on the contract, contracts there, they spent about two hundred and eighty-three thousand to put that main in. What they did is they went on the south side of main two. I got the district map on there for you, if you can take a look at the map. They put a box in right at the units of Wildlife Refuge Fence, and that's where you can go view, the two mains come in, you'll see district or main two, and then the private main to the south. What they did is they ran that private main straight north to Rantik twenty-one to service Joe Well's quarter, and I have a map of that on there, it's kind of, I add elevations and stuff on that map, and you can measure all this stuff yourself. But anyway, they did that back in two thousand and three, and they're not using any of the main two assets, and main three was totally, main three is still there, but we're not using it. Because I, the year after, I see that my dad pattern tiled that Rantik twenty-one, they went straight to the main main. And anything that was on the south side of our new main, what they did, they would hook the, the district assets up to our new main and then cap it on the hillside so it wouldn't get full of mud. Now, the advantage of reducing the assessment now is there's no big bill hanging on the district, so nobody's going to be surprised about a reduction in the assessment. And as you can see, Joe Well and William Goshen paid for the entire deal. When you look at the assessment, these guys could have probably forced the main in on the entire district at the time because they had the units available to do that, and they did, they decided not to do that. And then they set up their own assessment schedule, which you have before you, basically we're going to be paying along with Joe Well, a hundred percent of the maintenance on this new main. You guys have any questions?
Thousands. What's your goal? I don't understand, I, well, I went over all this stuff and it's, it's, it's great, when you talk about the map, you talk about this, this map, this. I did not gather that your goal, I did not gather that your goal was to change the assessment, and what are the neighbors going to think of that? I don't understand. I, I understand if you think you're not using it, but you, but is this sta, I don't even know, is this standard to?
It's been consistent in the past, they've, they've allowed people to reduce assessments if you can prove that you have your own main and you're not using a district asset.
So when you talk about map, there's really, there's, there's the old drainage district map, and then you got this map with the colorful. And then you got this map with the colorful everything on it. And north, I take you to, or what you just said is to the left. You said you ran the main straight north?
No, we ran it straight west.
Like you said, north, I'm sorry.
No, well, here's the deal.
The old main is north of the new main. I heard that, okay.
That's probably good next. And we're requesting a ninety-five percent reduction in the unit's asset.
Okay, just so I'm understanding it here, because I don't know that I do. The main, are you, are you saying you're, you are no longer hooked into main three?
That's correct.
And which?
And we're not hooked in the main two either. Because we.
Even though, I mean, on, on the map here, it says it runs, oh, twenty-one hundred feet. Is that right? Into, into your field and you would not be hooked into that tile anymore? Is that what you're, or I'm, I'm just trying to follow on the map here.
We're talking twenty-one hundred feet of the old main.
Of the old main.
Right, yeah, we're not using that.
You're not using that at all?
Well, that's why we're not taking it off a hundred percent. I can tell you that that portion of that main that's running flat and it's full of mud.
Okay, so it needs help.
We already did that.
Yeah.
We put in our private.
Sure.
Private main.
So what you're getting at is the old main needed work and you went in and put your own private main disconnected from the old main. And therefore, therefore, you should, um, be assessed less. I mean, that, that, I mean, that's what you're after today. Okay. Just so I understand where you, what you're, what you're after.
Does this outlet in federal ground or it outlets into the district facilities in that junction box?
It, it outlets into the federal ground. The box is on the private side, but it goes directly into that. Units of wildlife refuge. Just as main two does.
You're saying the junction box is in the federal ground?
No, it's just right next to it.
So it doesn't enter district facilities at all?
No.
Well, I think all of that information would need to be verified to start out with. But, um, we don't have the authority or we can't just blindly adjust assessment schedules. We have to have an engineer that does that.
Well, Kyle, let me tell you something on DD four lap twenty-eight.
We're not talking about.
Yeah, I wanna talk about it because you set precedent.
That's not.
The engineer sat here and told you, you guys could do whatever you want to us bolt them in. And you, you pulled a, a number out of the air, disregarded the engineer's report and pulled your own number out of the air and gave that individual an eighty-five percent reduction. And he destroyed, um, public assets. We didn't do that here.
Yeah, we're, we're discussing DD twenty, main two and three though, Joe, today, so.
Well, I just want things to be done consistently.
Well, that's certainly things we could check into here. Seems to be information, opinions, uh, of different information here. So, um, is, is it something that, I mean, that's, that's fine. Whatever happened to pass is passed. Well, what's the right way to do it? I mean, that, that's really what, what it boils down to.
Well, I, I feel like it needs to be verified through an engineer, engineering firm.
So, and how does that?
Well, I could hire one.
What's that?
I would hire one.
You would hire one? Well, the, the board, the board has trustees have to hire the engineer for, for anything done in the district. But, um, unless we would agree to the same person, but.
Well, it's a private tile, isn't it?
Well, we'd be examining the county facility, not the, not your private tiling.
What do you want to examine that for?
That's, I've.
That's not in question.
I'm not sure what, what, uh, what the end, end goal is here, I guess.
The end goal is to get our, uh, assessment reduced.
No, I understand that part, but.
You already know what the county main is. The only thing you gotta verify is.
Well, it's verifying that you've unhooked from the county main, I think is what, what I'm understanding.
How are you, how are you gonna do that even with an engineer? How are you gonna do that?
That's what I'm asking.
Televising.
Televising.
Video, you're not gonna televising, right?
Yeah, I'd televis.
It's called televising.
It's called televising.
Put it out in the air or what?
No, televising.
We're videoing it.
Will you run a camera through?
It won't be on PBS the next day.
No.
You shut.
Never did that on DD four lap twenty-eight.
Well, if you have a concern with DD four lap twenty-eight, we can certainly put that on the agenda, future agenda, but.
Then there's other places like on DD four lap eleven, you just took the US Fish and Wildlife Service off the district. You just took their assessment or their units assessed off, down to zero. You did it on DD four lap two. You did it on DD four lap four. No engineers or nothing. You just took them all.
Well, I'm not comfortable, I guess, approving until we need to figure out what the right process is to, to make, make sure. I mean, I'm, I'm not even arguing with you, Joe, on what have you got there. But, um, just need to make sure we're going about the right way if that's the route that we end up going here.
Well, I would be, um, disappointed if you run a pile of expense up just because of my name.
No, not gonna just.
I want to be treated like everybody else, consistent.
Well.
I mean, you better be looking.
We would like that, we would like that too. So there, there's some reasons there and you know full well why we're, we're gonna have to, have to make sure we're going about things correctly. If someone has a suggestion for action today, otherwise we can, um, I, I'd like to do some digging on it a little more and making sure we're got the right processes.
What's your timeline?
We can, we can put it on again and it doesn't matter to me.
If somebody wants to come out, I can show you how I look at that, you know?
Yep.
I mean, I can show you what's there.
Yep.
Be glad to do that.
Any suggestions, recommendations?
You don't know what's going on up at the ground. I mean, you can't just walk in here and say, we're not using it and, and, uh, everybody just walk in and say, we're not using.
Well, there's one individual in this town that seems he can do it all the time. He done DD eighty-nine eight. And he actually did illegal activity when he did it.
Again?
You know, I'm just going by history and I know you haven't been on the board that long. But, uh, there's, and we've done it in the past too on, I think we took some ground off of DD four lap four and took to the slough. And, uh, we got a seventy percent reduction on that. We've been through this before.
What was the rationale then? What was the?
Well, they weren't gonna improve the county mains, uh, open ditch. So we decided, uh, we got together as a family and took the water from DD four lap four and took to the units of wildlife refuge through our own private property. And that was a twenty-four inch main also. You know, and we went, and then what we had to do there is because we were moving water from there to a different district, we had to have three public hearings, which we did. It's all in the history. And then we hired an engineer and they determined like the old man did on this.
But that wasn't done with this project?
Well, here's the thing. We never left the district. That's why this is different. We're in DD twenty. We stayed in DD twenty. We took the water where the DD twenty main took it.
So I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah, go ahead, go.
So would, would, and I realize this is twenty-two years ago, you're saying this happened. And nobody's asked for any reduction for twenty-two years. And, and wouldn't the thing, hindsight works real well, I know that, I appreciate it. Wouldn't the thing do, as far as the right way to do things, does be say, if we do this, are we gonna be able to get a reduction?
Well, you have, there's like on DD eighty-nine eight, that never happened. They, they put in a.
Again?
I'm just going by history.
Yeah.
Okay, there's been projects that have been put in, then they wait until, oh my God, we're gonna have a bill. And then, then they go before the trustees and say, hey, I got water going the other way. And, and the trustees, not you guys, have not done that in the past tour. Um, they would just grant the guy, uh, a reduction in his assessment. And then that bill would go, we paid some of that. I think we paid up to thirty thousand dollars of other people's bills after a new project was put in. And then they decide, oh gosh, we don't wanna pay that. I'm not doing that here. I'm doing that before any project starts. And we were good enough. My dad was good enough along with Joe Well to do the district a favor by not forcing a new main. And they could've done that in this situation. And they didn't do it. They decided to pay for it themselves, help the neighbors out. So I, I was just going to the records and I came, I, I was surprised my dad didn't ask for a reduction. I was really surprised.
Well, that, I mean, that's all good. And I, I mean, you're, obviously you're, you know, got every right to come and, and ask. Um, but I do believe the engineer does make the changes, especially in, in this case. And, and we need to involve an engineer in some way there. But I'd like to check into that and just, I mean, I'm not just gonna approve something just because someone says, hey, I disconnected. You know, I'm, so it's, um, yeah, we're gonna need to look into that further. And, um, as far as timeline, I don't know. What's a reasonable timeline, I guess?
I don't know if we can necessarily say.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna go off of someone else, someone else's schedule.
And, and we also should keep in mind, um, the rest of the district here. And we should probably have a public hearing either way. Whether there's any adjustments made or if not, even just to get feedback and information from the rest of the district. Um, there should be communication that goes out to everyone. Typically, any of the other changes that have been made would have been correlated with other public hearings.
Cause we've done reassessment of acres.
Adjustment.
Or adjustment to the, yeah. Um, but it's usually, like you say, it's in connection to a project or, or whatever, reclassification. I don't know. Do it. Let's, let's check into it.
Proactive.
Yep, no, no, I appreciate it, so. Okay, we'll leave it at that for today and, um, see what we find.
So when are you gonna get back to me?
Well, let's, uh, I'll, I'll look into it and let's do for within a month or so, get back to you.
That's not good enough for me. I want it, I want it kind of what could be a month or so.
I don't know how I can give you an exact date, but, um.
Do you wanna come out and take a look at five month that or?
Well, if I would do that, I'd want, I'd want an engineer or if we're gonna go that route to do that and, and how that process is gonna look. So, um, I don't want it to be just me going out and kicking over the dirt. So, um, that doesn't mean much in the conversation. I, it doesn't, it doesn't, so.
So when's your plan to action?
Well, gonna visit, visit with engineer about it and visit with Marge and, and see what direction we can go.
Engineer you're gonna visit with?
I've got multiple that we work with.
Point that, that county engineer, if you appointed him, he can do drainage work.
I don't think we're gonna appoint our county engineer to do our drainage work though. I, and I think there's some, some conflicts there anyway, but that's, that's not.
Okay.
Discussion for today, so. Okay. Think we're just gonna have to leave it at that today and, and I, and I will look into it. Yep, I got it written down here. Well, thanks, Joe. Okay.
Put on record, no decision. Or do we need to?
We.
You don't have to do anything.
Yeah, there's no action taken.
Yeah, no action.
Okay. Discussion, decision acknowledged, petition for improvement of DD four, subdistrict nine, laterals one and eleven tile.
Marge, you want to say anything about that or you want me to or?
You can if you want. It's, it's in the file.
Yeah, it's, it's in our folder here. Um, so we've received this petition. If you look at the map, um, it kind of outlines the location. It does correlate with the other project that we had talked about going through the federal ground. But this would be downstream of that to evaluate what potential, um, depth could be gained or grade or any combination of that stuff. With Bolton and Mick already working on that other project and already having a lot of the information and data, they would be most poised to take this on and, um, have a faster turnaround since they've already done some of the work in regards to the system. So, um, next steps would be appointing an engineer to evaluate this petition. But this is the paperwork we have received. I don't know.
Is the petition a bonded?
I don't believe a bond is required for this mission. Rich, do you have anything you wanted to say? I've talked to Brad and Rick, obviously, but.
Yeah, I've been around to keep up on what's been discussed, but it's, it's just research to see if there's something that's feasible to do once the tile through the slough is redone. Do we need more capacity? I don't doubt we do, but I have no information on it.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had anything to say.
It's just some research and some of the people up the line would like to, to know if it's something that should be done. See if it's proactive. If you need more part capacity, needs to be looked into.
Any questions from the board?
So these two petitions are, are just continuation of one of the other?
Just more signatures.
More signatures, yeah. And on the map, the blue part is the part that the US Wildlife Fish and Wildlife Service is gonna provide the material to do or each district's gonna do. And the engineer was in here a week or two ago and saying that, you know, it now would be a good time. If we're gonna gain any elevation and grade, this now would be the time to do it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so the people that signed the petition, what percentage of the assessment do they represent? I mean, does, do all the people in the district know about it?
No, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be communicated to all the members of the district at this time. The process for an improvement petition, um, you only need one at minimum as an owner. But the more, the better. And that's what I've communicated to them and, and other people.
So what percentage of the district do they represent?
I don't, I don't have a figure for that. But, um, when it comes down to it, the, the petition starts the process rolling to do the research and, and get a base of. and get a base of information and knowledge and then you go to a public hearing, explain all the information. And that's where people have the right to object at or before the public hearing and that's when remonstrance rights are, um.
So what will it cost to have this done? Are we talking about five thousand, ten thousand?
Ten, ten thousand probably, um, depending on how detailed they get in the order, um.
Just to do the study?
Yeah.
Whether it's gonna help. You, you said you want that done.
Well, the reason to acknowledge there are major rules of field, if it could help with future drainage.
Right, now's the time to go.
Project with the slough.
Yeah.
Should be realized if there is enough fall to, to put in a little deeper so that it works better up through the line.
And, and the challenge to that, and I explained this to Brad and Rick when they called, but the challenge is we're kind of starting a research phase after we've got the other one almost in the construction phase, which if, say hypothetically, we can gain another foot or two of depth in best case scenario, say, say we can gain two feet. Then you really have to wait till the other project is through the public hearing phase and it's through the remonstrance portion to know that you're actually going to construct it before you actually make changes to the other one, because otherwise you could put that pipe two feet deeper and then all of a sudden you get a remonstrance and nothing happens and then you have pipes that are not like a.
I understand that, so, I, I, I mean, I, I think I, I might even said it a lot of the time, I think they'd wanna do this, I think everybody would wanna do this. But are you gonna, are you risk losing the, the money for the same project?
No, and that's, that's one of the things, I think Tyler was gonna be reaching out to, um, the, um, people at Union Slough and double check that and I believe, um, he has and said that that was not gonna be an issue. I believe Brad and Rick have been talking to Ed at the slough about that. But that is something we need to double check before we actually postpone construction and have a solid answer on that. But this would be to get the ball rolling, to get information from lower P's. So ideally, we would've started this petition a year ago so that the information could've been had already and had them both projects correlated, but, um, we just received the petition, so we just have to play with the cards that we are dealt and, and that's where it does correlate with the conversation we had at the other hearing. So with the people that signed this petition, they're requesting that we get that information, um. Yeah, I guess that's kinda the long and short of it.
So is there any, is there any, uh, is there any reason not to, is there, is there another side of the story?
Well, I don't know that we have another option besides sending it to an engineer, I mean, we received a petition, so we have to appoint an engineer by the code. The only way to not follow that process is if we didn't get a petition. So, yeah, I, to some degree, the, the law ties our hands on that.
Excuse me, it's, it's my understanding that there's enough acres, uh, on the petition, and I signed the petition, but I'm not real familiar with, like I said, I've not been making for a few weeks, pretty much, but, uh, there's enough acres behind it that I think you have to go through and check it out, don't you?
Well, this, that doesn't apply to remonstrance, Brad had asked me that when we were on the phone and, and I did talk through that whole situation. So if, if it gets to the point of, or when it gets to the point of public hearing, that's when you have the remonstrance rights and you have to have seventy percent of the acres and fifty percent of landowners objecting to stop a project, otherwise it moves forward. And I don't have a tabulation on these acres, but you're probably right, it's probably in that ballpark where it's potentially remonstrance proof. But just because someone signs on a petition doesn't mean that they can't object later either, so it's not, it's not set in stone until that public hearing.
That's right, it's just, just information searching to see definitely something that.
But, but even, yeah, but even if we received a petition with one signature, I don't, I don't think we have the ability to not appoint an engineer, get a report on it since it was requested. So, yeah, I guess, I don't, I don't.
It's just information to the landowner who would like to know and now's the time, now's the better to know it before the Union Slough project goes, which there, it might be that it's not advantageous if we don't do some research to find out.
And, and I mean, it's not just, it's not just bare bones information, they can't just say, oh, we checked the elevation here and here and we think maybe we can do this, it's, it's the full preparing to report like any other improvement project. But since they have already done some work on this same lateral, some of that work has already been done. So it would be a little more efficient in that regard since they're already working there, Bolton and Mink is already working on that. But it still has to have, they have to do their survey of the physical conditions. They have to put a preliminary design together to see what capacity is, could be, you have to have cost estimates so that you have something to talk about. I mean, it's, it's the full detail, but this is the time to do it and at least kind of maybe the last time to do it before that project gets constructed.
The research, it don't have to be a Cadillac project, it seems like everything does when you deal with the county.
No, it's not.
What we need to know to start with is, is there more fall than what is already there on the existing tile?
It's not about a Cadillac project, but you gotta have enough information.
It really costs more than it should, you've been around long enough to know that. And everything's pretty, pretty decked in depth, but, um, basically what we need to know to begin with, in my opinion, and I'm not really a part of this to a point, but if there's more fall available than what there is, it's something that's looked into and also how much capacity is there now and and if, if it needs more, it's been a, there've been a drainage problem up in that area for, for as long back as I've been involved.
Well, yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't take an engineer to say that that area needs more drainage, I mean, anybody that lives or farms around there
Now's the time to look at it, it's gotta be done sooner or later. It should be done as soon as possible before this Union Slough project, if possible, in case it could be something agreed with, with the slough to be able to put in this new tile at, at a little more depth.
Yep. Are there any other questions from the board?
Well, we have it on the agenda to acknowledge the petition, is there a motion attached to that today?
Yeah, we should send it to an engineer.
Okay, so.
So I'd make the motion, send the petition to Bolton and Mink.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Stecker, second by Wacter. All in favor of sending the petition to Bolton and Mink, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay. And then we have, uh, discussion, decision, agreement with DD one twenty-nine in Faribault County, Minnesota Drain forty-one. And that's also in your packet, a word document, has everyone had a chance to see that.
This is the one that we ran through our attorney and he looked it over and said that it looked good.
Correct, yep.
And that's why we put it on the agenda to move forward with it, um, cause yeah, I believe uh, Faribault County is waiting on, on our approval before they can move forward with it too.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and we do need to, um, kinda decide what direction we're going here, but I do think there's probably a couple things that need to be discussed or verified and kinda ironed out before we actually just approve the agreement that's prepared.
Okay.
One, are we going to just do a split by acres, which is what they had proposed? Are we going to split it by the classification schedule and the results of that, because that was what we had discussed about splitting costs based on reclassification, based on our Iowa process happening on both sides of the border and that's, I guess, we can do it either way, but, um, that's one thing that I think we definitely need to talk about and iron out for sure. Another part is, um, they do talk about emergency repairs and, um, small dollar value repairs, that does have a different threshold than our public hearing threshold in the code, um, so I think some of those decisions, um, whether we're gonna talk about them as a board here or what. I, I think Marissa was, she had told me, I know that she's got either one or two commissioners that are able to kinda meet and discuss and go over some of these terms outside of a formal meeting and kinda negotiate. And she had asked if we wanted to do something like that or if, if we do it as a board as a whole, but another thing, I guess, um, it does talk about dispute resolution and it does say that either county may file a claim in Faribault County, Minnesota, and that may be something we should talk about because the laws in Minnesota, especially around drainage, are different than the laws in Iowa. There are some similarities and some overlap, but I think we should look at some of that and, um, Bolton and Mink is appointed on the Cessous and the Faribault County sides to represent and like the, I know the conversations I've had with Tyler and he's had conversations with the other ones in Minnesota, they kinda know where those laws are similar and different and I think that's something that needs to be vetted out a little deeper, um. But I don't know if you guys have any other thoughts or questions or concerns or whatever, but those are a couple points I thought we probably need to talk about.
So then it sounds like we, we should approve the agreement today.
I, I personally wouldn't.
I think that if any conversations take place about the agreement and the changes, it needs to be the full board.
Okay, so do we wanna schedule, um, some sort of a joint session then or how do we wanna have those conversations?
What happens?
Yeah, I think it has to be.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to have an idea of what, of what you wanna change it to. You said attorney looked at, Todd looked at it or?
Our drainage attorney.
Uh, Jim Hudson.
Yeah.
We have any agreement like this already with them or with any other county in Minnesota?
So another one that would be a little bit similar, um, would be a private agreement with, there's only one landowner, but it's on sixty, so, um, it's up one and that had a little bit of a unique situation as well because the land.
And owners there requested that we build the facility sized for their acres so they could drain to it, but all they wanted was the pipe to come across the road and then they would do all their own private type instead of us building the facility through their property. So that was based on the classification schedule and there is a reduction to the amount they owe based on the percentage and the portion of the facility that we did not physically build because of their request to just bring it across.
Across the road, um, but that was, I mean, the fundamental of that was, it was, the cost was based off of the classification schedule that we do here, um, so we followed all of our laws, um, and any dispute or any of that nature would be in Cessous County, um, this is also a little bit different because water in Iowa goes into Minnesota and I'm not sure if that's something they're willing to compromise on or not, um, as far as like venue. I would hope that there wouldn't be anything that's a substantial issue toward something of that nature, but, um, it is probably worth talking about.
She was there in the email from Jim Hudson saying that he, uh, thought it looked good.
Tyler, I think Tyler sent.
Did he send something that he, Jim had called?
Yeah, I don't remember if he sent it to all supervisors, I'll check again, I thought he did.
I don't think I got it.
I can forward it to you.
I think that communication is good for all of us to get and not to hear about it in a meeting. I mean, that's just me because I didn't know Tyler or, I didn't know Jim Hudson had said that this was okay.
I didn't either, but.
You guys have talked about it last week, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it got brought up last week and that's what.
Right, so we didn't get anything.
No, I, I didn't get the email.
Right, no official email.
I didn't get the email, but we did bring it up.
Right, and I think that's important for us all to have.
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, if we're gonna look at doing the, the changes like you're suggesting, you know, doing base of reclassification and things like that, I think we do need to have Jim kind of involved with that a little bit too, to make sure that, you know, what changes we do make, um, to this are, are gonna be, you know, approved and okay, so, um, whether we do, you know, we do a joint session with Faribault County and then, um, discuss the changes and then send it back to Jim for, um, review or we, um, have them available during that time, make sure that any changes that we're making are, you know.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that would be a legal question of whether we split it between acres or, um, classification schedules, the engineer determines, I don't, I don't perceive that being any.
No, and you were talking about like the, the dollar pairs and stuff like that too, so.
And, but we already know the laws that pertain to that, it, it's a fifty thousand dollar threshold for having a public hearing for Iowa laws currently and the actual repair threshold is higher than that even. So really, the piece there is in some regards opinion, but, um, it's whether we wanna have that different than our state laws or not. And I don't know that, I don't know if any of that would be an issue for Faribault County to adjust, I don't.
Not a big issue.
Yeah.
But if we, if we sent the agreement to him to begin with to approve or to say it was all right, if we make changes to that.
Yeah.
His stamp of approval is no longer there.
Right, and we can still get it.
I, I mean, I feel like we need to at least highlight what we changed and said, here's what we would like changed and if he sends back, yep, that's great.
Yeah.
I think if we're going to approve an agreement that he said was all right, I think he should have the final document, not the one that we changed, you know?
Well, and if you guys think it's good the way it is, then that's fine, but those are some things I wanted to bring up for discussion.
So is the, the split out between acres versus, um,
what, what would that signify?
Classification benefit, I mean, is that, that's different from any usual process we would go through?
Yeah.
In, in our county, that's more Minnesota's proposal to us, um, right?
We don't, yeah, I mean, with our, say, when to beg over, how old to.
We don't, we don't know.
Right, right. It's all based on the benefit of it.
It's all based on the benefit by the classification schedule and that's where, I said that before in our public hearings that if we base it off of the classification schedule by the same process that we have for every other district in Iowa.
Hmm.
It, it, it shouldn't be an issue of fairness or anything else because it would be the exact same process. Any other landowner in the county would be paying their bill based off.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So, I, I mean, a landowner on our side shouldn't have any issue with it because it's the same process whether Minnesota be involved or not and then we would use that to say, okay, this is your guys' portion of the bill and they can split it up however they want, that's not our concern, but at least our side would still be treated the same as they would be in any other district.
Can I see that as a valid point, knowing the classification schedules usually how we do it?
Yeah, for, for everything. And that would be something that in all reality would have a longer lifespan or longevity in the agreement. If it's, I mean, it doesn't even have to specifically be laid out in your how that's done. But if it's a process of how it's done is laid out in the agreement, then whether through this process or anything fifty or a hundred years from now, if there's an improvement or an annexation and other acres come in, whether it's on Minnesota or Iowa side, it would, it would be able to be adjusted and reflected if who pays what cost. And we do that normally with our own process. So I would, in my opinion, would be that I think our agreements, especially like this one with Fairbowl County, should correlate with that.
So we want to reach out to Fairbowl County and see if they'd be available next week or, or when they would be available to, to s- um, do they meet on Tuesdays up there? Do you know?
I, I don't remember. I know Marissa would have told me that at different times. But um, yeah, I mean, me and Marge and Tyler can try and coordinate with them and see what um, works or whatever, schedule wise.
I'm gonna get ahold of them and see when they're available.
I want to know, did we, do we do this in the only order it could be done? Or should we have had these questions before the attorney looked at this agreement? Or we had to have this agreement before we could ask those questions? Are we, are we continually, I'm, I'm not saying we are. I'm asking, this is a question. Are we continually fumbling and delaying because we're not doing things in the right order? Or are we doing things in the right order? I'm not asking a judgment. I just, I just want to know what we're gonna do to correct this one and what we're gonna do to, and I realize these are very rare with Minnesota. But how we're gonna keep from doing it in, in the future? If, if, I'm not saying we made a mistake. I'm just asking.
I think having the attorney review it um, was not a bad thing. But we probably could have had more of a final document prepared. And that's, I think that's what I took out of Marissa's question and comments of, are you guys good with the agreement? Do we need to look at a few other things? Where do those discussions go from here? I, I don't, I don't know if she was meaning us to act on something at that minute in time. But um, I don't, even if we make a couple of small changes and have them highlighted or the strikeout and add, I don't think that would make a huge impact to the process as far as attorney costs or whatever. He's gonna probably be able to review that fairly quick.
Okay. So what's gonna happen first? You gonna, you gonna ask her if they're gonna be fine? Because I understand this, it's not gonna be a turf war between them and us. If, if, if it's divided on our side, you're gonna do it by Iowa law and it's divided on their side. How do, how do you?
Yeah, I don't think that won't be an issue. We just have to come up with a split between the counties. Um, and yeah, I don't, I don't see that being an issue at all.
So there's eighty-two percent that is mentioned somewhere.
Yeah, it's, it's in the bottom.
Page two.
Yeah. Uh, we don't have a problem with that or is the reclassification gonna change that?
That would change that.
Which way?
Probably for the veteran.
I don't remember off the top.
A percent more, a percent more to us.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly because they ran the reclassification schedule two different ways. They ran it for just.
I, I feel like you're baffling me with bull and let's, let's cut to the chase. If it's gonna be worse for us, they're not gonna have a problem with it, right? If it's gonna be worse for them, they're gonna have a problem, correct?
I would say.
So it's not gonna be a problem? So do it, you know, get it done, move on.
Well.
So, I, I mean, is this something that, can we even just call Marissa or email or whatever? Copy the board and, and say, this, this is the change the board would like to make? And she can respond with yea or nay and, and, and we just.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And then when you get done.
Then send it to Jim Hudson and he can send it back. We approve and life goes on.
And then it's done.
Yep, sound about right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, we will send. Do you want, so you want split? And then you talked about emergency response and small repairs, um, having a different threshold. Do you want that addressed? I just want to make sure we put it all out there.
I agree.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, section five addresses the cost less than twenty-five, but for Iowa it's fifty.
Okay. Okay, so you address section five and then the split by acres.
Correct, yeah, yeah. And we had talked about that with them a little bit.
Okay, and then the third thing I had written down was um, the dispute resolution, um, filing the claim in just Fairbowl County. How, do you want that addressed?
I don't understand the question, so you're gonna tell what.
Number eight on page four.
Number eight?
Number eight.
So what do you want? You want it to be in, you, it's gotta be somewhere.
Well, I would think it could be either, um, either county, um.
Just change it to either county?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we have to be the sole venue or they have to be the sole venue. But I, I think if we have either being an option, it's.
So it can be filed in either county?
Okay.
Change it to that.
So either county may file a claim in either county.
Yeah.
Well, you'd, you'd list them Fairbowl and Cessous.
Okay, Fairbowl and Cessous.
Fairbowl or Cessous.
Yeah.
Do they ever have water flowing our way?
Um.
Well, most, all that goes to the blue earth.
I understand.
Fairbowl, I'm not sure. Um, we do have other water from Minnesota that flows out there that's in the next county to the west.
It's in Martin.
Yeah.
So what are, is there agreements there and what do those say for where it's? I mean, does the person that's taking the water traditionally have more say than the person?
I don't know. I haven't been involved in any of that.
We would be receiving water from maybe the far west edge of Fairbowl County in one eighty-five, I believe. Um, but then I think that water eventually goes back into Fairbowl County.
Check with them, see if they, they might change.
So just those three things?
So yeah, we've got the.
The split.
The split.
The number five and number eight.
Number five and the rate.
Did you guys have anything?
No.
No.
Is this something they're wanting to do or it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have an agreement already for the ditch that this tile comes into. But we don't have an agreement for the tile itself.
Okay. But that tile is not very long in their county.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Okay.
And we don't need a motion for that, so. Good enough. Okay, no repair requests today. Supposed to rain tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Uh, otherwise, anything else for Marge?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I had visited with two contractors specifically, have verbally told me they were getting me quotes within the last couple of weeks and I haven't heard from either of them for the Whitmore tile. So um, or at least general ideas of different cost estimates of things, so wait me here on that.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Have a good day. Okay, discussion with county auditor.
Okay, we'll start with next week first. So next week, um, don't have a lot yet. Approve US Highway eighteen east of Elkhona Detour Agreement with the Iowa DOT. So far, just our other regular stuff. We do have our department had meeting next Thursday, so that will be on the agenda if you can attend that. Welcome to attend that. Um, I did send you an email. Yes, it is, yeah. So we might reschedule that actually now that you say that because, yeah, because we'll all be gone for that, yeah. So that's a good point, thank you. Um, I did forward you an email this morning. Um, Renee Von Bulken, who used to handle all of our union contracts. She does do the engineer's office, but um, does not do the other business anymore. She did get notification that there will be a vote for the union for the sheriff's office. I have not been receiving those emails. Have any of you been receiving those emails? So we need to reach out to EAB and make sure the right people are getting that information.
The last one I had gotten, I specifically responded and copied.
You copied it.
Yeah, and so.
And I told them that um, Carter was chair for the twenty-five year and to send anything in his directions. And I haven't gotten anything since that.
Okay, and Renee thought maybe it was a fluke that she got it. But since nobody else got it, I don't know where they're going. So we need to make sure that we're not missing something. Um, so I'll reach out to EAB and see.
Is that something we need to discuss as far as getting or put on the agenda? Or as far as getting Renee to do handle that?
Well, they, you guys voted, they voted, what, two years ago to have Ayers and Cooney handle that stuff, right?
No, we talked about it because they, they had put a proposal together for a flat V for um, HR and all that stuff. But we had talked at that time that um, we only had the one union. We were already through that stuff, so we didn't, I don't think we wanted them to do that at that point, which is why we stayed on the hour here.
Okay.
We never, we never signed the contract or nothing.
No, we didn't. And so yeah, we would need to make a decision on that moving forward yet.
Okay.
I think we put more money on the budget though, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Yeah.
Extra five thousand, I think.
Yeah, so since it's going forward, we're gonna need to put that on the agenda next week to decide if we want to handle that.
Before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, if we, um, you know, just kind of circling back with, you know, when Bailey was here and that's not the way it's stated in our handbook. So is our, is our handbook getting evaluated and reviewed? Who's doing that?
So um, Ayers and Cooney, it has been a long process. Ayers and Cooney is doing that. And they have um, made changes, turned it back over to us and we have been going through it. Um, and then we, um, with Rin, with, uh, what's her name?
Anne.
Anne.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so that's where we are at in that process, so.
Okay.
So it's still working progress?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, um. And then I did get um, an email from Elizabeth. She was gone on vacation last week. But she did email me back yesterday and that said, um, a sub fund of the general fund and its own general ledger fund, um, would be a good idea um, as far as the emergency response complex. So she suggests that, or thought that that would be efficient way to handle that. Um, so it, it's, it's not gonna affect our regular budget um, because it's still gonna be reported, reported as a general fund. But it will show up on the cash and gap reports and we'll be able to track how much money is in there. So I will probably put it on the agenda for you guys to approve this sub fund. Um, it, when, when this budget goes through, when I publish it, it won't list that sub fund yet because we haven't developed that. But it'll still be um, reported as general fund activity.
And will it be under general other than for budget purposes?
But right now it won't be. It'll still be, because you haven't approved that fund and I have to have it in by tomorrow. So i- in this budget, it will still be listed right now where it is. But then next year's budget, then we'll have it in the other column, if that makes sense.
So, oh, so if they're paying us rent though in this budget year, um, isn't that part of the budget process? And like, why do we have to approve that fund if that's part, does it have to be? Or can it be approved during the budget?
Well, I thought a sub fund had to be approved by the board in order to create a sub fund.
Because we're, boy, the, I'm trying to make it cleaner for you because um, if they pay the rent um, this upcoming fiscal year.
Mm-hmm. I mean, if you guys are fine with me creating the sub fund before tomorrow and putting in there, I'm okay with that and approving the sub fund next week. But I just didn't want to create a sub fund without having authorization from you guys to do so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I just think it'll make the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just basically the same money that we want a budget for, but it's just in a different pot.
In different, uh-huh.
I mean, I think it'll be cleaner for you, otherwise we're going to have to amend that, you know? I, I mean, I think it'd be cleaner just to.
Start it on.
To start it, you know, when we're doing this. I think it'll help you, honestly.
If you guys are fine with that, I have no issue with that.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, we can approve it next week. I don't have any issue with it.
Okay. It's just with her being gone last week and getting back to me yesterday. Was it possible to put it on the agenda for today, so?
No, it's not, no, it's okay, but.
Okay. Right, and then um, the rest of the stuff I have to talk about is budget stuff and we can get to that when we get.
Sure.
So that's all I have.
There you go. Howard, anything?
Um, went to the Cessous County Development Meeting uh, last week, Tuesday afternoon. I don't think there's anything really worth mentioning there or expanding on. Went to the conference board meeting last Tuesday night. I let somebody else, you know, you, who's, uh, year thunder. And then um, yesterday we met with the Fair Board. I'll let that be kind of stuff there, I guess.
Feel free, if you guys can talk.
I, I had the conference board and um, caught in on the tail end of the Fair Board discussion. You know, there's, there's questions I have, but I think it would probably be during the budget workshops that, you know, honestly, the questions that I have, so.
I'm glad a couple of you are able to go. Kyle?
Um, I was sick last week and still am. But um, I did go to our CIJ DC meeting on Friday. The financials and, and all that stuff is in good shape. It was a little bit slower here recently than, than average had been. Um, during the detention reports, I mean, it's, it's been talked about a lot. But we did talk about the medical bills that counties are receiving. And there, I don't know if it's confusion or what, but there was comments made before that, that we had a policy, the medical bills would be paid by the counties. Um, and then that was stated at this last meeting that that's not in our policy and procedure manual. It's a hundred and sixty-some pages long. So that was asked of where that is or what the status is on that. Um, then the biggest topic of discussion was the lawsuit and the litigation. And we went into closed session for that again. But after um, closed session, we did act to direct our attorney to um, communicate with Harden County's attorney and share the documents that have been gathered so far um, to try and negotiate a settlement. So we had, without getting into the details of the closed session, obviously, we, we've talked about it here that there were um, requests from our executive director and um, That there were um requests from our executive director and um Harden County's attorney for past information. And those were kind of tabulated and discussed and trying to plot a course moving forward for that, so. And then, yeah, on the um fair and grandstand side of things, um, we can talk more during budget discussion. But they, they do have a price tag for the grandstand project of one point nine five million. And they said sixty-five percent is needed for, before they can apply for a CAT grant, which is convention, attractions and tourism. That, that's what I wrote down.
I, I thought it was community, uh, attractions and tourism, but could be.
Could be.
Yeah.
Um, and that's.
Sure, attractions and tourism.
Yeah, and that's, that's funds through the state, but even at that, you'd need one point two five, one point three million. In pledges or commitments before they can apply for that.
What do they have so far?
Four hundred thousand hard pledge.
Yeah, they made, I don't, I don't wanna interrupt you, but they made the comment that there seems to be a lot of people waiting for the county to uh commit. I, I, please you to correct me if I got this wrong, but I, I, they made a pretty hard pitch that they. Paid five hundred thousand to the county and then they, they thought they are gonna, they could get the other four hundred thousand to get to their two thirds. But I, you know, I don't, I don't know how, what, what my definition of hard is, but their fundraiser guy was there. Basically, what, what I took out of it, they, they think that they're gonna be successful, it's gonna take five hundred thousand to the county.
And, and they did say it doesn't really matter what the timeline is as long as there's a commitment. Because even if it's, and I mean, we talked about the, the TIF, how it's kind of stair steps up in value over the beginning years. They said even if it was nothing for the first year, two, three, whatever, if it was something in year like four or five. Or year three, four, five or something, um, as our revenues increase.
They're flexible.
The, the, the pledge of support is something that they can take to the bank and get financing on. And that's what they, the pledge is the important part, um, which we would have to follow that up with action to make it happen. But they did say even if it was something, the, like, the same increment over whatever number of years, they could take that as a total too. But I think for our purposes, um, especially to make it clean, paper trail, all that. If we're going out to the bond market, I think, well, we should probably be doing that in one day, in one event. Rather than going back every year for a small dollar figure. Um, so if we said something was three years out or five years out. I think going through that process once or even twice if we needed to would be my recommendation. That way we're not spending money and going through the process and. We really wouldn't gain anything from that, I guess, in my opinion. Um, and they wouldn't gain anything either. So, yeah, I guess it's just the discussion of where we're gonna land at for total of how that looks structure wise and whatever. But, yeah, they made it pretty clear. Um, obviously, they requested more, but they thought. Five hundred thousand would be important. Um, and they did say there are individuals waiting to. See what our commitment is before they decide what theirs is. And I have heard that prior to the.
Whether that's fair or not, I'm not sure if it's fair, but that's where, that's where they say everybody's there.
And, and I had heard that prior to that discussion yesterday. So.
All right, well, we can talk more about that in the budget set. Okay.
And then, I think that's all I have.
Judge?
Uh, I didn't have any other meetings other than the conference board meeting. Um, we do have conference board meeting again tonight, depending on weather, right?
We do. I, I would imagine it'd be.
It's only supposed to rain.
Supposed to rain, and I think it's gonna be forty degrees at that time, so it'll be fine. Um, yeah, I, I had care connections last Tuesday in between our board meeting and the conference board. Not a whole lot to report from that that's any different. Um, our fund balance was eight hundred thousand and change. That'll go down to upper threes by the time we dissolve July first. Not a lot of new news there, so. Uh, and then, secondly, I did talk to Rick Peterson again, chairman Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and I O B D A. And it was my understanding that Humboldt County was in some sort of a trouble or whatever. And they needed to change their policies to get the memorandum of understanding. He said, no, that's for all counties. All counties need to have memorandums of understanding with all their neighboring counties if they share drainage districts. I said, well, I don't think we have that. And he says, most counties don't. Humboldt County doesn't have any. And Wright County or whoever didn't, didn't either. And so that's why they're starting to make all these agreements with neighboring counties.
Or what reasons are required?
He didn't go into detail, just whoever the, is the head guy at I D D A, that's their policies or whatever. That counties need to be working towards or implement. Um, so that's why he brought it up. Well, it wasn't so much Humboldt County's problem, it was the state problem. Um, so, so that's something we're gonna have to look at and do a joint meeting with them at some point. The problem is their board meets Monday morning and maybe Tuesday morning, so we'd have to, one of the two of us would have to do it at a special time, but.
Yeah.
But it's not just Humboldt County, we're actually gonna have to do this.
Correct. We'd have, I mean, that, that's why they're doing it with all the neighboring counties. And he, he said we would need to as well with all of our neighbors have some sort of an agreement.
And this is not a state, but this thing that's directing this, it's the drainage district association's directing this.
And that's where I.
I don't know where the basis is at.
Who's, who's the guy that's the head of?
John Torbert.
John Torbert.
I don't, I don't know where he's, I mean, I call him and ask, but I don't know where he's getting that requirement from.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything in the code about that. I'm fairly confident he has.
So maybe that's worth a call to John Torbert then, see where they're going with that.
Yeah, I mean, and I didn't, I didn't make it to the last I D D A meeting here in December. But, um, I, I don't, I don't know of any code changes that would have required that.
I was at that meeting where I wrote the garage charts and I don't remember anything, but before I was.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything, I don't remember anything being said about, but, but I did lots of things I don't remember. I will, I will say that too, so.
Yeah.
But if somebody at, at a district, drainage district association, this thing, oh, it's a good idea if you do this. I'm not discounting it, it's a good idea, but it certainly changes the.
Changes the atmosphere of it if it's, you have to do this or you should do this. Yeah, yeah. So.
Recommendation versus requirement.
Correct. So, well, I mean, I can call John Torbert and talk to him too. Uh, I don't have his number, but I can get it, I'm sure. Kyle, do you have his number?
I'm pretty sure I do.
Okay. Well, either one of us can talk to him, that's fine, but, but be good to get a definitive answer on that. So, uh, otherwise, I got nothing. Um, that would roll us in, well, I guess, update from conference board, were all of us here? Kyle was not here because he was sick. Were the other, other four of us were here, weren't they? Okay. So we did extend an offer for a new assessor and we're just waiting to hear back a response to finish the agenda and the budget. And this is really summary of last week and that's why we're meeting again tonight. So we'll get an answer tonight as far as if we'll have a new assessor or not, or move forward with a different process. That's all there. Okay, solar ordinance workshop. Yeah, why don't we take a, take a little break?
We gotta move everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah. It might take more than five minutes. Or maybe not.
So, Tammy, I don't want to dump this on you, but I just wanna ask, did, did, did you sign this up through the I S A G meeting?
Oh, no, so, no. I wanna go, I can only go on Thursday.
Okay.
Um, it's the only day I can go, so, um, and I don't know, I know you said we could do it ourselves. I don't know where to go.
Okay, okay.
I might have used to know where to go, but I don't know where to go with that anymore.
So Thursday, okay, I can sign you up for Thursday.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go on Thursday.
Okay, Howard, do you want me to sign you up?
Please.
Thursday and Friday?
I almost wrote my third one and then we would have been wearing.
I can do it.
Yeah, this is the one with savory?
Thank you.
It, it's, it's in downtown Des Moines.
Yeah, so you stay there also?
You can stay there, yes. Um, if there's any, there probably isn't any room there.
Okay.
So, um, let me go back to my other computer and make sure I can still register you.
Okay, and if, yeah, there was something about by February twenty seventh, so I won't be crushed if it.
Okay, okay. Let me see what I can find.
Okay, all right, sorry about that.
No.
Are you guys going?
I'm gonna try, I haven't booked anything, but I'm gonna try to get.
I'm working in Minnesota.
I don't, I mean, I, I just want to, if there's something, if there's some bad shit, you know, I'll go. I don't want to go just to say, I checked it out.
No, I, I, I'm pretty, uh, I'm a janitor, but I typically.
I, I guess I would, I know they certainly spread it around for, to, to spread it around for that very reason. But downtown Des Moines sounds like an expensive environment to compare to.
It can be, but I mean, I've usually gotten rooms at other, I don't, I've rarely booked at the actual block. I've usually gotten better prices at my places, so.
I've been motel sex is cheaper.
It is. I'm, I'm not saying quite that.
It's like, what was that old hotel on the south side of town, Candlelight Inn?
Yeah, Candlelight Motel.
Candlelight Motel.
Love the old one, the south side of town, it's borough.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But then the candlelight burned down.
Oh, no.
Or knocked it down.
Somebody built a body shop there and now I think Lens owns it for a, for a, for a man cave type of thing.
Oh, really?
Personal store.
Okay, okay, was, oh, or it's not, no, it's.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it wasn't that very large, right?
No, no, no.
Oh, this is tax notice thing that everyone needs to remember again.
Correct.
So like.
You have no control of that.
Right, no, I got the, but so like me, like, but if you look at like your amount for a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value or whatever. Then it is, it's just the rate.
Yeah, well, that'd be great.
Okay.
But overall, like, I'm gonna take. And that's what I asked for. Then you got the answer for four five.
Okay. But that's just adding one of the four dollars of last year's, or, or, or. But in your tax valuation, you'll have ten percent of your, your full, your total tax bill, but also fifteen percent.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Some people would be angry about these terms.
Well, yeah.
There's probably.
Yes, so general rate the same, rural basic rate the same, no, much less. General basic. Okay, okay. Okay, and then that is the twenty fifth, right?
Yes.
Sorry. No, I don't even totally use the rate, because it'll be different for everyone, so if I can get the rate. If I, yeah, we'll be talking about that at another time, so I don't want to give you anything entirely the same, you know, and. Oh.
Can I get, can I get those for her?
Get what?
Or do I have to wait until?
Or you can go get three.
I don't know, I don't know why you could.
You're not, have you guys not officially sent them yet?
Well, they're not officially sent, so we can cancel them. I don't know.
Right, I mean, we'll be, we'll be officially done discussing today.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Are you sticking around a little while? All right.
All right, I'm gonna go back to my.
So I see I have a text here from somebody that I don't identify. My belief is you only just sent back overcoming town, which is in place, there's no other, or any other crops. Thanks for your time. Do we, do we know who that is? Three two oh thirty one seventy three? Let's see if I got it on my. I did not. Um, check with Pat, he's got more people's phone numbers than, than any of us. So I'll check with Pat to see if he's got that number.
Kyle, you said?
Yeah, yeah. Did you hear about this?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, sheriff's office just put out.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
About the grandparents.
Yeah, mm-hmm, but that scam has been going on forever, for so long. But this is the first time somebody's actually gone to a door to collect the money. Usually they have them send them overseas stuff and gift cards and all kinds of stuff.
This happened to my grandparents probably, I wanna say fifteen years ago, so it's not a new thing.
Not at all. No, when I was at the sheriff's office, we had lots of people scammed by it. But this one has reached new levels when they actually came to the door to get money.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's kind of good that they're idiots and did that because then they could get caught, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, because. Yeah, well, 'cause I, I've seen other press releases too, that they would meet at like gas stations and things like that, or try to meet at places where there is a camera, so it's like.
Oh, usually.
For them to, for them to go to someone's door, I mean, hello, how many people have their cameras?
And usually it's all scam, they have them go buy, um, carts and scrap off the codes at the back and just give them the numbers online, I mean, stuff like that, they, I mean, it's usually from overseas.
Yep. Yep. My wife had, uh, some older lady come into Fairway, when she worked at Fairway in Emmitsburg, and bought hundreds of dollars in iTunes gift cards.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah.
And then she said about an hour later, she came in with a police officer and said, this is where I purchased the gift cards and stuff.
I don't know what, I don't know what.
You can call it too if you want.
Right, yeah.
And no, I, and he, I tried to get, said, oh, I mean.
Yeah, absolutely nothing.
You pay for the gift cards, they got the money, you're, you're not gonna be able to recover that money.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The other counties were pushing for it either, so I don't.
I mean, we haven't heard from any other county that says, hey, we need a memorandum or whatever.
I don't think it's anything real.
Well, maybe Rick's confused about something, I don't know.
He probably is.
We're, we're obviously not on the same, same page somewhere.
No.
So. There you go.
Um, Amber and Howard, registration is closed for spring conference, but I did send an email to Tammy Norman and ask if I could get you registered, I just haven't heard back from you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Alright, everybody ready and set to go?
You bet.
We're talking about solar panels, okay, so. Um, we, last week, two weeks ago, we had, uh, decided there was a list of things such as height and setback and, and, uh, vegetative, um, screening and such things as those. What our desires are with the hope of today, coming to a general conclusion as a board, so we can involve then an attorney to draft something for us, so. Um, does everyone have some ideas, spent some time thinking about what you'd like to see in an ordinance? Or, yeah, any discussion surrounding that, I guess. I've done a little research, I'm thinking on things, talking to people, but.
I, I mean, I just think the important aspects are setbacks, the drainage, making sure our drainage is, um, taken care of, and the decommissioning. Those are all very important, I don't know if it has, I don't know, like, you know, I, when we did the wind stuff, we had to deal with like road crossings and things like that, but obviously maybe a different scale, but heck, I don't know how they come in. You know, but, um, just making sure that that stuff is protected, um. You know, and as far as setbacks, I, you know, my biggest thing is I have people that I know for sure that have been vocal in my district that really would like maybe to take part in this, uh. And so I don't want it to be so limited that people can't have them, that's my biggest thing with the ordinance, I, I want it to enable people to use their land for that if they so choose, but then, you know, also obviously some setbacks need to be addressed, but that's my take on it.
Do you have ideas of what, what those setbacks you're thinking, or, or?
No, I don't. No, that's where I give my, like, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, I, I don't even know what would be good to do, would it be good to go visit a place that has these, just to kinda see and, and like, you know, we have these ordinances, would it be helpful? Like, I don't wanna halt the process either, I know we gotta get moving on it, but I'm more of a visual person, I have a hard time saying, oh yeah, that setback will be fine, you know what I mean? That's where I kinda get stuck, like, I agree about it.
Well. Yep, yep, that's understandable, um, 'cause we really don't have utility scale commercial, like solar projects in our surrounding county areas.
Yeah.
Um, the nearest one is Honey Creek down by, between Badger and Fort Dodge, and, and we did get, receive an email, um, as a board, I think, as to if we were interested. I mean, they would give us a tour of what a, a commercial solar project looks like, um, if that's something we're interested in. Uh, I've been by it, I mean, I know what it looks like, but, um, that's something we could, we could do if, uh, just so you can get a visual of what, what a project looks like. That wouldn't be a bad idea, even if it's not as a board, just sometime if you're going shopping in Fort Dodge or whatever, just go and drive by it, but, um.
And I think for today, what we can do is, um, we've set this, you know, kind of standard, like this is what we're gonna see for our setbacks and stuff. And that way we can at least draft something and, and get it into the hands of our attorney to kinda, um, iron out the details and, and put in that, you know, the legal jargon and stuff that needs to be in there. And then, you know, if we do have a chance to visit the one down there, um, and we can always come back, I mean, it's a draft. You know, we're not working on a final product, product today, we're working on a draft and we can always come back and readdress it, um. And in that thought, you know, I was, I've been reading into this Green County, um, a lot of their setbacks I do agree with. However, the six hundred feet from dwelling units, I think that might be a little bit excessive, because, I mean, six hundred feet, that's, that's a pretty good distance that you'd have to have between a solar project and, and a, um, dwelling, and if you can't compare that to what is on the environmental council's recommendations, they say, um, setbacks from a residence should be within a range of one hundred to two hundred feet, I think that's a little bit on the close side, um, so I'm thinking somewhere kind of in the middle of there. My thought would be around three hundred. What are your guys' thoughts on that? Now, this is just a dwelling, not property line, just dwelling.
Okay, someone had mentioned something, I, I don't know if it's in any of these ordinances, but, um, the fence lines?
Mm-hmm.
Which fence lines are usually kind of a property line, it's close, you know, to maintain some distance between a fence line and where they start.
Like a fifty foot buffer.
Yeah, buffer, so, I mean, I did think that that's okay, uh, to have in there, uh. I was just kind of looking at, not saying necessarily their wording, but kind of the, the, when I looked at Clayton counties, you know, they had some good, um, points, like, you know, theirs is the purpose, the definitions, the procedures, and site inspection requirements, operation and maintenance, you know, they had some, it, it was.
Simple and organized.
Detailed, but simple and organized, and not so wordy, that I kinda followed theirs a little bit.
Followed sleep reading it, yeah.
But, uh, yeah. So, I mean, they had some really good key points to talk about, um. I don't know, anybody else, if anybody else looked at different ones that they kinda felt were, at least were the key elements of our ordinance?
Well, and like in Clayton's for setbacks, it's just.
Theirs is very simple.
It just says adhere to our standards of the zoning districts, and in every county zoning is different and their plan's different, so how they have that all worded, I, you know, I have no clue, um.
Right, and I was talking more for the.
Just the organization of it.
Just the organization of their.
No, it's, it's an easy one to read, yeah.
Very easy to follow, and they had good points, um, not saying our wording has to be like that, but, um. I know it's easy to follow.
Yeah, for sure, no, I, I liked it for that reason too.
Wanna be able to read it.
And I think Doug was wanting to come up here for this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I gave him a call, I, I, thanks for saying something, Amber.
I just thought of something.
Thank you, I completely forgot.
Hey Doug, we're, uh, discussing solar ordinance. Yep.
So, why, why we're waiting for that, Amber and Howard, I did hear back from Tammy, and she said you guys are, um, able to register at the registration desk at the conference, so you can just go whatever day and register there, and then they'll just send us a bill afterwards.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
And do you know, maybe this is a better question for Doug, but in our current just drainage district procedures, as far as tile goes, is that, that's, I mean, we already have certain regulations for that, but it doesn't need to be specific to solar, or is that just part of a conditional use permit, I mean, what?
There's, and, and we can definitely talk on that when it gets up here, but there's, I know there's, um, procedures and how they cross, but I don't think there's any sort of setbacks as far as like installation, because like the wind turbines are obviously on a much different scale, because it's one unit here that takes up such a small percentage of the overall field, where solar would be covering the property. So I think we should have a setback in there, um, from the tile line for maintenance, repair, replacement, whatever of those tile facilities, because you need certain working room to be able to do that.
Do you care if I speak on that?
If you got an answer there, yeah.
Well, I just, so like, once again, I can't speak for other developers, I really only speak for us, but I assume things are more or less the same, I mean, so, in America, we typically purchase the land and then, um, I mean, from there, we're gonna.
Oh, sure, so that'd be different, too, yeah.
Yeah, so, but I mean, even if, I mean, I would imagine if we were to lease the land, obviously, we want our project in where it is to have proper drainage, and so we typically come in and recreate and put our own tile in. So if you have a setback and we wanna attach to the county line, can we not do that then?
No, I, I don't think there'd be any.
You could.
There's inhibiting of attaching to drainage, I'm saying not building panels on top of it, or within a certain range, that way.
Here. Building on top of it.
Why don't you like, can, can you tell them they can't build on top of it, they just have to provide access, they just have to provide access? I mean.
I mean, we have the, we have the right of way or easement to maintain those facilities, but.
It'd be like telling somebody you couldn't grow corn on it, wouldn't it, or you'd feel that's a much different.
Well, solar panels are a little bit more permanent than corn, corn you can, you can plow out an area, it'll grow back after a couple of years, and, and, but solar panels, you can't put those up and they're, they're there. And then you got lines that run underground too, that you could potentially cut through if you're trying to go on and do some drainage too, so you gotta keep that in mind as well.
I mean, if the infrastructure's not properly mapped, or, you know, like, how, how do we know, like, is that the tile's even there in the first place, if there's not proper map, that we need to be.
I mean, we do have, we do have maps now, but they're not pinpoint accurate for location, but that would be something that would need to be done, I mean, when we did the crossings for anything with the, um, windmill stuff, it had to be investigated and exposed and get correct location, so that that was all documented and verifiable, um, so. I would say it would be something that would need to be field verified and get proper locations.
And then I guess the other question would be that, I guess, future is, if anybody was to build anything, and then you have a setback in there regarding how far it needs to be from tile, someone comes through and wants to build a house, or wants to put up a grain bin, or, and you have the standard for, you know, solar, well, I get the, you know, different structures, but.
I mean, we have had people that have built, like hog building, for example, either really close or on top of district facilities, and they were responsible for rerouting those facilities
Yep.
and maintaining the drainage for the rest of the district, so, I mean, that could be an option, but probably not the cheapest option, I mean, if you're going through an entire, say, an entire section of ground, uh, one mile square, it's not gonna be cheap to reroute that tile around, and then you still have to add the grade and all those other factors to be able to make it work, so. I mean, I think field verification would obviously be important, but I don't. I don't know.
As I say, that's, you brought up the point, but that's, we've done that with substations at least in the past, I'm not a hundred percent sure how we've done, I guess, Zap County's probably a drainage district, there's a project going in up there, but, um, or exactly what we did in Franklin County, we did a smaller project there, but, uh, I know we have for substations at least had to reroute tile and, you know, whatever it might be to. The goal is not to harm, and obviously you guys will affect the tile, so.
Yeah, and I mean, it, it's not, if you guys are wanting your facility drained, I don't think we would be fighting each other in that regard, it's just if, but I think it's also more than just going in and doing a small spot repair, if there's a hole that washes out and you need twenty feet to do a repair, that's one thing, but if you've got an improvement project or petition like we had this morning, and there's a project that's proposed and it goes through all the legal phases of public hearings and all that, and they want a one inch coefficient, for example, and it takes a sixty inch pipe put in the ground, you need a sufficient area to be able to work, to do that type of construction, so I don't think just having a path for a pickup to drive through there or something else is even in the realm of sufficient. I would think you would need a hundred feet to two hundred feet for, uh, a band that would allow you to do those repairs or improvements, because otherwise it could be a an impact on the rest of the landowners in the district, if, I mean, say you guys built over top of a tile, and then a improvement project comes up and they say, oh, we need a hundred and fifty feet width to be able to build this, are you guys gonna say, you guys have to pay for us to take these panels out and put them back in and our lost revenue along the way? Like, that's not something the district should be absorbing, in my opinion. So. Doug, do you have?
Yeah, we, we have a procedure that has to be followed, and Mid-Arctic Energy, Alliant Energy, all of our wind energy projects, they all follow it, um, and there is an easement, they would not be able to build on top of an easement. I don't think the trustees of any drain would allow that to be done, and I think it's pretty.
How big is that easement, how, how wide is that?
Well, in, it's something that is identified, and it's not really necessarily a feat, but then we follow it up in our wind energy to put off, I think fifty feet on each side of a, of a, the centerline of a tile.
Of a, of a drainage.
The drainage district tile, and I think it's about a hundred feet on each side of a drainage ditch, oh, drainage ditch.
Those are established?
Those are established in the wind energy as a setback.
They weren't established in, in just the general planning and zoning for the county.
The easement, no, and that, that was not in, that's the I R code that says that, uh, utilities will get an easement from the drain, so. So, they, they, I mean, there's a couple of things that come to my mind, um. The easement, they either say, well, if we build over tile, we'll tear all of our solar panels out if there is need for repair, I don't think they're gonna want to do that. But they're gonna have to, if, if there is a drainage district facility through property that they are planning to put their improvements on, they're gonna have to realize that, and they're gonna have to realize that they're gonna have to take into consideration some sort of a setback, they won't be able to construct on top of it.
Yeah, and I think since we laid it out for the wind stuff, if we laid it out for solar in particular, I mean, and I would, I would probably say a hundred feet. My personal recommendation would be a hundred feet on each side of a. my personal recommendation would be a hundred feet on each side of a drainage ditch or tile system to allow for maintenance and repair, upgrade activities that may come.
That's what I wrote down.
So, yeah, I mean, a hundred feet on each side would get you two hundred total, and I think we could build almost any project we need within that frame.
And that is what we, we do have, a tile of one hundred feet, a setback from the centerline and an open ditch three hundred feet.
Okay, so it's three hundred from open ditch.
That's, I had written down, just was my, part of my recommendations for what we're doing was two hundred from an open ditch center and one hundred from a drainage district tile, so that, that, that's all, I mean, I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah. Well, and the ditches, if you do have excavation there, you need a place to put the soil there, that can spread it out farther.
Correct, you need more room.
So, yeah, if we matched those, um, at a hundred from the centerline for a tile and three hundred from the centerline of a ditch, I would be fully supportive of that.
Especially since that's our precedent we've already set too, so, that'd be. And Mid-Americans should be used to that. I mean, they built plenty of stuff in the county.
And done anything here.
For wind energy, don't they own some, or no, no, Alliance owns, Alliance owns that, that's right.
Yeah, and American hasn't done anything for that.
That's right, that's right. They just charge me electricity.
But, yeah, I mean, as far as you guys being able to hook up to the county facilities, we wouldn't have a restriction on that at all. You'd still be able to drain the water there.
It'd just be a setback. That setback would just be from the district tile then?
Just district facilities, yep. Uh, so like any, that doesn't, like, if we have a twenty-four inch main that goes through there and then you've got a four-inch private tile that comes off for six or an eight, it's not a setback from those tiles, it's just from the main that actually transports the water from property to property until it gets to the ditch and then the river. It's not, it's not from every single tile line that you have running across the field.
Yeah.
And-
Cause all the private stuff would be agreements with the landowners. We have nothing to do with that.
Yeah. And some fields have more or less district facilities than others, but that would be something-
Some have none.
A developer, yeah, some have none, that would be something a developer would have to-
Look at.
Look at and weigh those options or whatever, but the district facilities that are transporting would be the only thing we could protect. And I guess, yeah, that's, I mean, I'm not trying to say it time today cause my voice and stuff, but, yeah, that's been my biggest thing is making sure things like that are spelled out and protected for future generations as well as immediate maintenance needs.
Doug or whoever, what, what's out there for setbacks for dwellings and buildings and bins and?
All over the place.
Yeah, there's a lot, I mean, across all over the place. In just our zoning, uh, for agricultural zone property, uh, buildings are supposed to be sixty feet. If you're on a local road, sixty feet from the road right of way. From the side yard, it'd be thirty feet, and from the rear yard, it's supposed to be one hundred feet.
I missed, I don't- I missed the, you're saying, so you're gonna identify what's the front, what's the side, what's the back of what, of a-
Well, that comes into question sometimes, yes. But that's what our, how our zoning ordinance breeds as far as setbacks in agricultural zone areas.
And those setbacks are for anything or just buildings?
Structures.
Structure.
Yeah. So, for example, if, uh, we've had situations where, um, solar arrays are put up, uh, for a confinement and maybe they cannot meet the rear yard setback, they have gone to the board of adjustment to get a variance. And as long as all the neighbors, um, are okay on that and do not, uh, do not object to that.
Is that the immediate neighbor, or is that?
It'd be all the adjacent neighbors. Sometimes it's only one person, sometimes it's four or five.
So like, for example, if you're carving a hog site out of, out of a quarter, the only neighbor might be the county road on one side and then the guy that was selling it off?
If it's in the middle of that, if it's, if it's on the north side and they don't, they don't own the property to the north, vice versa, depending on what's going on, so.
Right. Yeah. And sixty, but, a hundred feet, one of them was a hundred feet?
That's rear yard setback, yeah.
How did they get to be more?
That was in seventy-three, so, um, why that was put that way?
I think it, like, I don't even why I bring it up, cause in town, like, I know lots are different in town than what they are, but in town, you you got a front or rear sides, I think rear sides are less than front, you know, setback, that's-
I think you are correct.
Yeah.
But that's agricultural area, when you start getting residential, it's different as well.
Yep.
For Woodin, Cassou County.
So it doesn't sound like, on, on, it sounds like setbacks that are already in print and enacted upon are, are more restrictive than maybe than what we were thinking already as far as. No, it does, yes, that's a good question.
I mean, the only numbers I've been thrown out today is Josh was saying three hundred feet, uh, from a residence, but that's a little different than a, than a property line.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I would, and I know I said this before, I'd rather see a higher setback for the option of waivers than just a, it's a hundred feet, you know, regardless or whatever, that's, that's just where I'm at. So.
Yeah, I, I do, I agree with that as well because, and I think that to some degree pushes the communication in a positive direction and a positive stance from the beginning to say, okay, we know we need to work and talk with our neighbors, so, um, granted, yeah, that can potentially impact how much of someone's property gets used, but, um, those rights do go both ways. But I do think having an option for a waiver or, or whether it's all a part of the setback, I think is important and just leave that open for negotiation. Rather than us just being the bad guys or good guys or whatever.
So are you saying three hundred feet setback from occupied residence? Are you saying from property lines?
I was saying occupied residence.
Okay.
That was just a number I threw out. If anybody else has any other-
No. But then you gotta get into the definition of what is an occupied residence as well.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, cause you look back at your counties and I actually do like what they have, um, in regards to the other portions of the setbacks. It's like, for instance, they have a hundred and fifty feet from property lines, except for where the property lines nearest to the utility scale solar energy system define and separate property belonging to two or more participating landowners. I think the hundred and fifty is good.
So that they haven't defined as there'd be no setback if they're a participating landowner?
If you had two neighbors both participating, the setback is kinda what you'd do.
Yeah, which is, yeah, I mean, that kinda falls into the waiver category, so, same, different way of stating it.
And they also have in their hundred and fifty feet from wildlife management areas and state recreation areas that I would agree with. It's a good distance, um, they also have two hundred and fifty feet from buildings and, and that's kind of a, hey, that's a little too general, um-
Do you define as a building?
Right, right, so that I don't know if I would add that in, but, um, and then another one, they had a section for a hundred and fifty feet from cemeteries, which I think in the idea of the property lines, if they're a hundred and fifty feet from the property line, I don't know that, that, I mean, that's.
Just a lot of those ordinances include cemeteries and hospitals and care facilities and churches and all that kinda stuff is-
What about airports?
Airports is-
They actually do not have anything here in the Green County one that I'm looking at for airports.
There was, I was looking at one from Manona County, and theirs is more part of their zoning ordinance. And they, they do mention airports. I don't know, let's see if it was a setback, but they do mention airports. Okay, they say all solar energy systems located within five hundred feet of an airport or within approach zones of an airport requires the applicant to complete and provide the results of the solar glare hazard analysis tool for the airport traffic control tower cab and final approach paths.
I think the FAA like regulates most of those setbacks anyway and it's, you know, you're permitted through them anyway, so I, I think that's kind of like, uh, I think people put it in there for making them feel good kinda thing, just to make sure it's covered, but I think the FAA, you know, has a pretty strict tie on that stuff already, so.
So if you were to build within a certain amount of distance from an airport, you would have to, here to the FAA?
FAA.
Not all counties have an airport.
Well, and I don't think they cover private airports, which is one thing that I know, so.
Yes, yeah, that'd be the one other thing.
Did you have something to add?
Yeah. The registration with the federal aviation, um, that, that is a, a subject to, to make sure it's discussed, but in order to build a solar farm, do you have to get any clearance at all from, from FAA?
I believe for glare within, I don't know what their requirement is, but, um, yeah, I'm not a hard picture.
Can you find out what those requirements are and get back to us with the references? Thank you.
My own personal opinion is that if you, if FAA would just approve of it, which I know they, they do require, um, a review with wind energy, but when you get it from FAA that this, these are all within their review and, and they are satisfactory, that is a, that is a simple way of handling things from the zoning administrators.
This has, you know, in, in this, um, regulation, it has the applicant shall obtain written approval from all appropriate airport authorities. And then it's something including Benad, one and two, and it lists their airport.
Yeah, we could probably copy something like that.
Does it say private airstrips?
It does not. It does not say that in this paragraph at all.
We give out some of those in this county.
We got private airstrips, that type further. We got houses and batches and, yeah, I mean, there's co-houses, I mean, people have them.
Well, then you need to, you need to make sure that people do not construct private airstrips if they realize their neighbor is going to be, is possibly working with somebody to develop.
Yeah, that, that goes back to the building thing, you know, somebody want, some individual wants to, you know, so they will throw a building out there and and that makes life difficult for them. If they're anti-solider, then they go quick, okay, this is my airstrip and-
Yeah, yeah. Well, those are just points that I was pulling out of these different ones, you know, so, just things that I think we need to, you know, make sure we don't overlook.
I guess it's whatever legal timeline that all gets done, cause, you know, on the flip side, the companies do the same thing to counties or whoever else, and while we already have these things set in place, we already got the easements, you know, you guys can't do anything. It's, you know, it, it works both ways, the, where they play that game and, and property owners out there play, try and play the game too, but, uh, I don't know, I think we just, just decide what, what our goals are and, and-
Well, and one of the questions I have as far as like, you know, in some of these, I'm seeing site plans, is that just something that's going to be already requested through our zoning? Or is that something we need to have in, in the ordinance that we're doing, that site plans need to be, um, submitted?
I think no matter what happens, site plans are gonna have to be submitted.
Right, but I-
To verify that where transmission lines are gonna be located just so that a review can be made and forwarded to whatever entity is gonna make that decision. Have you visited it all about, is this gonna be a special use permit? Is this gonna be, uh, what kind of a permit is gonna be granted? Our, our wind energy is a permit that everything is reviewed by the board of supervisors and approved by the board of supervisors. But as long as there are, um, there are needs for things to be reviewed, somebody's gonna have to review it to give it to the body and make sure that it complies with everything that's on, everything that's in the ordinance. Did you say you guys are building one right now in Eder?
It's, uh, we have projects in Sapp County, in Mills County, we have projects going up in, and I think Johnson County as well. We have one in Eder County already.
There is one already?
Yeah.
And there's one in Franklin County?
Yeah, one of our, it's real small, I don't, I don't know the, like, not, nothing compared to the one there by Fort Dye, but.
So if we're gonna, I guess where are you all at as far as are we gonna hopefully come to some conclusion here?
Well, who's writing this down to, cause I think we need to get it actually on paper and get some agreement and have something to potentially send off.
Well, so far, all we got is a hundred foot from a tile and, or drainage district facility and three hundred feet from an open ditch. That's really the-
Then we discussed, uh, adding that section in about the airports.
What do you do with airports?
Not occupied residence and definition of an occupied residence. All right, we need information on permitting. Kind of being all over the board here, there's an order, but.
Decommission.
We need decommissioning.
Um, maximum tilt. You know, that's been brought up and.
Maximum height.
Yeah.
Which is kind of the. Kind of goes together with the tilt, because they increase in height from the tilt.
I don't know if that's quite as important as with the wind, but road research area.
Yeah, so they do have selfie, I mean, pretty much everything that gets tracked in on those projects all fit on a standard. You know, semi truck tracks.
They have substation probably.
It's nothing like. Substation would be, I don't need to permit it, but.
But it's like a hypothetical, if we were building a project in Sioux, I assume since we're service territory, we have a substation here somewhere, I guess, I don't I don't know for sure, but. Typically.
I know like my substation is in Humboldt County.
Okay, we do, we have before essentially tapped into the substation in the next county, if we're close to the county line, it's whatever makes the most. Logistical dollar sense from a business standpoint, because once you start talking about the transmission line, that's where the money comes in, so real money comes in, so, yeah, so.
Sure. Right, right, right.
Do you have to construct an interconnect to the substation?
Uh, to the transmission line, I don't think it has to be to the to the um substation.
That was my quote, I was sitting here wondering, uh. Yeah, me was talking about the one north of town, uh, just just north of the city, a little bit. Somebody at another meeting acted like there was some something something special about that location, and I'm not aware, I know this is not you, but. I'm not aware of any substations anywhere near that, so you you can connect directly into the to a local line, as as long as the line is big enough to handle it.
Yes.
We don't need, there's nothing special about a substation.
Uh, well, both are important, I guess, so.
Well, you just you just gave me two different answers here, you said yes, and then you said they're both, so you need to be near a substation with a solar farm? You have to go through the.
It's it's more cost effective to be near a substation, it's not that you can't, because I know when I talk to solar developer, uh, Howard.
Yes. Yes.
If I said, you know, our our family gets letters for different things uh in Humboldt County, they would wanna build it on the parcel. That's connected to the transmission line ideally, and they would first consider those parcels um as opportunities for construction. If if say, you know, hypothetically, we said, no, we don't want you to build on that, build on the other half of the farm. Um, that doesn't produce as well, build over there, well, they'd consider it if nobody else signed up, but. But it just costs them so much more money to run those lines or run whatever, even if it's only a half a mile, so they're looking for things. Ideally along a transmission line or connected to a substation directly, is that, am I, am I right?
Yeah, and that's where there was a rumor that floated around with our Mills County project that.
Okay.
Paid like six times the average price of acre for our land there, which is not the case, we may. May pay a little extra to save the money on, you know, the connection point there, but.
Right.
We're not paying six times the average rate of payment, so I think a lot of people would probably be.
You'd be buying a lot of farms.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people would be trying to sell for six times the.
Yeah.
Rate there.
But uh. But no, I mean, did that kind of answer your question, Howard, I think?
Not really, I might, does it require a substation, you you're gonna put up a solar farm. Does it require, and there's a everyday garden variety utility line going by, can you look through that? And get it online, get it on the grid?
Uh, I honestly don't know a hundred percent, I know we need a substation, but I guess I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the. Exact specifics for all that, but.
That takes me back to what A and again, I know that's not anybody's, what's what's so special about where A and U?
There is a transmission line on on the west side of Highway one sixty-nine.
There's a line, but it's there's no.
It's not a distrib-, there's distribution and there's transmission.
Yeah.
And it is, my understanding, it is a transmission line, and they have to. I don't know, don't take me for it.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the solar panels produce direct current.
Yes.
And what is on the transmission and the distribution is alternating current. So there's gotta be something there that switches that direct current to.
But that's not, but that's not a substation.
Yeah, that's part of what's going on in the substation, bringing it up to proper voltage, bringing it up to the correct. Uh, current, and I I thought that's what uh. Uh, Jacob, or is it John, are you Jacob?
I'm Jacob, John was.
Yeah, John was here last time, and I thought he kind of alluded to that, that there was going to be an interconnect somehow, you've gotta gotta take that, which happens. With wind energy, there is what they call an interconnect, and then it hooks up to the substation, which brings it up to the transmission line. And I thought he said it was very similar.
Can I make a recommendation? So I know Amber says she likes Clayton Counties and Josh mentioned Green County. Maybe pick one of those ordinance to start from and then go through it and make the changes, so you're not starting from scratch, and then you kind of have an outline to follow.
I I like the outline of Clayton County, they didn't have as much in their first setback stuff, but you know. I do like the outline of it, it just it was easy to follow, I guess.
Yeah, and all we gotta do is, it's it's in an A B C D format, just tab in, you know. And you just start a new list under setbacks if you want, and it's very easy to keep that organized, so. But.
I mean, that'd be a good starting point, is at least choose one and then. Make the changes from there.
And we should tackle one thing at a time, um, I mean, four setbacks. That's, we need to figure out what what does the board wanna do for that, I'd like say I'd rather see a higher setback with option for waivers, I. Me personally, it's okay if you disagree, but me personally, I'd like an eight hundred to a thousand foot setback with an option to waive from an occupied residence. But. I know that's more than been thrown out.
Well, I I I guess I.
Hundred feet isn't very far.
Well, no, but I I think eight hundred to a thousand is. Seems like it's more than what we've seen in any of these other ordinances, but that's not saying. That ours can't be different, but. I really. In setting our setbacks and things, I I I don't really wanna tie people's hands too much, I really don't. You know, we're we're letting, we're letting a neighbor, possibly letting a neighbor decide what someone can do with their land.
Yeah, if you have it set at a thousand, maybe you get into a section where, you know, you could have three or four. People and and if one person does not sign off on it, that kind of.
You're dealing with a lot bigger distances than that out in the countryside though.
Well, I I get that, but there are some circumstances where it could be close though too, so.
Depends where you live, depends what the property is, yep.
Yeah, and and I guess that's where, that's where some of those people's concerns come in, if if they do have a neighbor. In particular, close to their house, so.
That is where those concerns come in, um.
Because if you had a, and the other side of that is the next thing in the Clayton County is the screening, within that. You know, setback with an option to waiver area, you have the option to request a um.
A screening, if you don't feel like you need one, doesn't, if you don't care, that's that's fine, but if you want a screening. For that, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, and I mean, even with our wind stuff, is that six hundred feet?
Six hundred or one hundred ten percent of the height.
Yeah, so I mean, six hundred would not be out of line, comparison to that.
That's from a.
From our wind ordinance.
From an occupied residence, right, right, which is way too close for a wind turbine, but.
Excuse me, that's adjacent property.
I think it's sixteen hundred feet.
Sixteen hundred feet from a.
I thought that was, I thought that was off the low, okay.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's different. It is different, I mean, wind is.
We're talking about two different things, yeah, wind turbine falling over is different than a solar panel falling over.
Yeah, wind, yeah.
And also for just the construction, I mean, the wind turbines, you pretty much disrupt an entire area of the county to to do that. Just the road system, the traffic, I mean, you're hauling constantly, there's so much concrete going in the ground, you're digging holes, you're making lanes. With the solar farm. I mean, they don't even pour concrete to install, it's just steel post driven in the ground with with the pollinator mix underneath. It's 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 so much less of a.
Less invasive.
Less invasive of a footprint on a farm than a wind tower, but I like that aspect of it, but it, I mean, it's, there's frozen cons about. Other than where the battery is set, I mean, you pour a concrete slide for that.
Yeah, that's another point that I wanted to bring up too is is um. Where that storage. Is located in correlation to runoff, you know, if there happens to be an issue with a battery leakage. Are we gonna have an issue where that's running off into water, you know, that would be something, too, and I don't know what that would look like, because I don't recall seeing that on anybody else's. Ordinance or anything like that.
Yeah, I think for the wind, having six hundred feet from a neighboring property line, so if the turbine hypothetically fell over, you're not landing on the neighbor's property. But solar panel isn't six hundred foot high, so.
They're gonna just fall down.
Correct.
And I, I mean, I'm not an expert on solar panels, but I would be shocked if they, if I'm alone, for I could see them breaking in half if a tornado comes through or something, but.
Panel fall off. They're not just gonna go.
They're not just gonna fall over for the fun of it, I would.
Yeah, and they, they're programmed to go flat when the wind reaches whatever, like if it's high winds, so it hopefully kind of cuts through the wind.
High speed, yeah, okay. Sure.
I think what we'll see most is that they they break from a snow drift, a snow drift gets packed up under it and it goes to tilt and essentially snaps, so.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
Could expose hail and things like that.
Yep, yep.
Is the typical height, um, tilt height, is that typical to be twenty feet?
I think that's more or less what we recommend, I mean, it's kind of whatever, I think.
I'm just seeing that number in these, and I was, is that ti- is that pretty typical?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I mean, I think we pretty much recommend twenty or no, no height, because obviously they're not gonna be, you know. Six hundred feet tall like a winter line or whatever, uh, and they're rarely at that max tilt anyway. Um, and then the other thing is that, you have to think about, if you're worried about how much of a footprint take up, well, if it's a shorter panel, then. The developer's probably just gonna try and place more, because the panels are smaller or can't be as tall, so they will just scatter more out if that makes sense. Typically, smaller max height, larger footprint, larger max height, smaller footprint, so kind of maybe finding the happy medium there of.
Well, what's the largest height that one could be?
I I honestly don't know, I guess, I I don't know what our call is is, I don't, I mean, obviously, I know we don't have any exceed twenty, but.
I was doing some research, I mean, they're they're really, for all the energy things, they don't exceed twenty-four feet, mo- I mean, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, so.
Right, so.
As I said, I'm worried about the mills right now, I believe they have a fifteen foot, so.
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty is pretty regular, obviously, like I just said, we prefer the twenty or the less, because the.
Yeah.
Figure or taller panels are more efficient, so.
Right.
Helps from a business standpoint for the developer.
Well, it's like you go over to Hancock County and look at the wind farm over there by Duncan, and you got bazillion little wind towers everywhere. And then you come over here and it's not as many, but they're just massive, you know, so.
Well, and I didn't mean that. Was the correlation with like fencing or security or uh screening or something, I would say do something similar to like the. Hundred and ten or even hundred and twenty percent of max height for a screen or something that way.
That was in some of them, that it needed to be a certain feet by three years and.
A little bit higher.
You know, it's. That's that's a little tricky, because then you're, I mean, you're planting trees for the screen, you can't guarantee those.
Well, they they make enough hybrid trees to grow. To grow certain heights for some certain amount of years, but yeah, I just noticed that in the. In some of the ordinances, they must be six feet by three years old or whatever, yeah.
They all have the flooding issues, so we'd have to somebody. Guess they'd drown out the trees too, so.
This one does say screening, um, determination of screening requirements will be made by the Board of Adjustment as part of the review and approval process that will be had. Based on adjacent or nearby surrounding land uses and topography.
Yep. So that's sending it back to Board of Adjustment.
I'd say twenty foot height on the panels would be fine.
I think that seems standard, so I wouldn't think doing it will.
I think if somebody's mad about it, they're gonna be mad at fifteen or twenty, it doesn't really, you know, I mean, it's, it's not like.
Yeah.
When you're, when you're tilting an extra five feet, it that's not gonna. I don't I don't know if that's a hill to die on, I don't know, but.
I do think a security fence should be required um on all next to your sides. I have Clayton's pulled up too, since you mentioned that, but they have that as, you know, security fence, um, must be as well. And then, I mean, they have signage above that with, um. It should only be warning signs, um. Basically, like manufacturer, operator, installer signs. It's not a walking billboard or something else like that, it's just information warning stuff.
Yeah, I definitely think offensive and security would probably be important.
Why, I think they would too, because they don't want people in there messing with their stuff, or or deer, yeah.
I would, I would assume that would be a controversial topic, you know, it's.
No.
Somewhere it's said in there that the electrical code required.
Oh, yeah, they could.
I'm not sure where I saw that, I read fifteen different things, I thought it was in this.
Jacob, does Honey Creek have a fence around it, around the whole thing?
I don't know, honestly.
I'm trying to remember.
Cause that was kind of scattered, so.
It's not all in one spot.
Yeah. I I don't really know on top of my head, I'd sooner probably got me fencing at some point in an area.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember what, to what extent it was fenced off.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, and this is one thing I know we had. People are a little project there up in by Sioux City, I know we've had had people go shush deer or whatever it is out of the, out of the fence, because they'll jump on in there.
Yeah.
Then, yeah, you know.
Well, nothing's eaten on the grass in here, this is all good stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I know in this, in the smaller, some of the smaller projects, you can, developers allow you to graze livestock in there and stuff. Well, I know in the s- in the smaller, some of the smaller projects, you can, developers allow you to graze livestock in there and stuff.
Yeah, typically just sheep.
Just sheep, yeah, yeah, I mean, you wouldn't want cows in there, but.
No.
Uh, I mean, do you do that for larger projects, just curious?
I know, like we've, I know like that idea was talked about, I know like Iowa State has a, a project with a line right now where they're like heavily looking into agriculture and solar at once, like they may grow in I don't know, all sorts of fruits and vegetables and stuff with it, see how they grow and whatnot, but.
I've seen bees too, people have bees in there.
Yep, bees, um, but yeah, that's I know, I think we've had to have people bring sheep in to raise it, um, but yeah, cattle doesn't work, because they brush up against it, oaks don't work, because they jump on top of them.
Yeah.
So it seems like.
But how they get that high, but they.
Yeah, it seems like sheep are the, the happy medium there, but yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the big projects if we've had anyone do that now or not.
I was just curious, yeah.
I don't think that's anything.
No.
Yeah.
Sheep must be great, yeah.
That sounds like a lot of stuff we pretty well agree on, except for the setbacks.
For field border, um, like buffer strip along the edge of a, of a field, um, or property line, is that I know it threw out fifty feet, but I mean, that's, that's your minimum, if you were gonna apply for an NRCS program or something, you know, they do fifty feet, but, um, I mean, is there other thoughts to that, that was in some of them, in some of the ordinances?
I don't know, any issue with that?
I don't know fifty feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I think, I mean, I think, I think the judge should have it.
It's not that bad. Should have something there. And then, uh, as far as what we find as um, utility scale versus just private use in community, um, to what our ordinance actually applies to, uh, I think it'd be important to to have, because otherwise you're gonna have people putting up panels next to their hog building and, well, does this, does this apply to the ordinance or does it not? How many megawatts, and so I, what my recommendation was to divine, to define um, utility scale would be basically one parcel or forty acres, uh, greater than, greater than forty acres uh, or eight megawatts, I mean, that, that, that seems.
And, you know, Clayton County does have, say, an ordinance establishing regulations for utility scale solar installations in Clayton County, Iowa. They do say utility scale at the very top of that.
Right, because I don't think we want to stop people from doing.
But do we need a definition of utility scale?
That's, that's what I'm getting at, that's what I'm getting at, well.
Is that what you're saying? Gotcha, I would say.
How do we define a utility scale, is there a definition?
Yeah, I would go for that.
The one that came from the Center for Rural Affairs, um, says twenty five megawatts or larger.
What's their opinion on it?
That's what I'm reading here, well crafted ordinance taking into consideration jurisdiction of Iowa Utility Board to approve projects that are twenty five megawatts or larger in size, so.
But to to get to twenty five megawatts, that's I mean, that's a couple hundred acres.
Yeah, and I, I have heard, um, multiple people.
Well, what is, what is?
Talk about interest in community solar, and I, I have heard that those projects are typically thirty acres or less, they, that was already discussed, but I mean.
What is mid American energy considered as a utility scale, their minimum, that you guys would build?
I, I'm not in the economics behind that, so I think.
You're supposed to know all these answers, Jacob.
I think that comes down to more a dollar sign feasible rather than necessarily like.
Energy wise.
Energy wise feasible, so, um, yeah, that's, that's a little above me, I think, so.
What's your smaller projects right now?
Like your Franklin County thing, you mentioned, how big is that?
I think that's like, only like five megawatts, it's real small, but I know nothing.
You don't know how many acres that covers?
What, did they say sixty eight per megawatt or something?
Yeah.
Seven to ten.
Seven to ten, sixty eight, five to ten, yeah, per acre you hear, so.
Acre per megawatt, right?
So if that's five acres.
Yeah, acres, seven to ten acres for one megawatt.
Right.
Maybe.
So that means forty acre ballpark probably.
Yeah, and I honestly like didn't even know that one existed until a few months ago, so I'm probably a terrible person to ask about that one, pull up our project now, I'm like, oh, we got one in Brag County, and then I saw this couple megawatts or whatever, so.
Well, it says in this, um, resource guide, a well crafted ordinance will take into consideration the jurisdiction of the Iowa Utilities Board to approve projects that are twenty five megawatts or larger in size.
Those are just, yeah.
You should just read that, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, but that, well, that sounds like it's more jurisdiction for Iowa Utility Board to be, to approve twenty five megawatts or larger, but that wouldn't I don't know, I wouldn't necessarily say that that's what our ordinance should be.
No, that's where my question is, so what is our ordinance for, what?
If we set it to that, yeah, that would be, so, I don't know, but I mean.
But that's what I was getting at, you need to define who it's for.
I think some, yeah, I think some of what it would be for, like, drainage district difference, we talk about that a lot, they would have no they would have no care in the world about any of that stuff, so, I mean, some of it would be outside their scope maybe, but, um, I would lean towards thirty to forty acres. Not above forty, but I would lean towards thirty.
Well, you're talking acre size versus megawatt size.
I mean, you could correlate a megawatt with that as well, but.
So you're saying one thirty to forty acres or eight megawatts or whatever the, the correlation.
Ten or whatever.
Yeah.
I don't really care.
So if it meant that the acreage versus the megawatt, or if it meant the megawatt versus the acreage, then between those two would fall under the utility scale, I think that would be good, because I mean like you said, if you had to put up smaller panels, but you'd have a larger footprint, you know, if we did just based by acreage, you could meet that acreage, but not have to large amount megawatts coming out, but if you did smaller footprint, larger panels, you'd still have a higher megawatt on a smaller, so I think go in that route where we have a, an or statement in there saying that if meets this many acres or this number of megawatts, it's considered utility scale.
I mean, that would take out your community solar project, it would take out your arrays at a hog facility, or even like Gold Eagle's solar array by type, there wouldn't even be anywhere near that, um, so, your more personal localized uses I don't think is the intent of the ordinance, and that's where I would say by defining it that way, we would we would exempt those uses.
I just said forty acres, because that's the size of one parcel, and typically when you sign up for, even for local stuff, you sign an easement for your parcel. How do you define that as a project area, I don't know.
I mean, you could be, you could have four parcels that could have less than that if you're in the tropical, that are touching.
Correct, correct. Maybe, not all parcels are forty acres, yeah, I'm just saying, most, if you, if you got a grid pattern
Yeah.
situation out there, but, yeah.
So you're saying forty acres, Kyle, you were saying roughly forty acres as well.
He's not thirty, but. I'm fine thirty to forty, I, I think thirty would be sufficient to allow all those projects to happen, but I'm not, so forty is not a huge difference.
Thirty's fine too.
What would that calculate out, megawatts per?
You're looking at five to.
I mean, seven divided by thirty would get you a four, maybe twenty eight, so I mean, I mean ballpark four at thirty, ballpark five, five and a half to forty.
So we could say, um, a project consisting of forty acres or five megawatts would be considered utility scale? Or do we want to do the thirty and then four?
Well, I did, I'd say probably thirty to ten, because of technology improves and they can produce more electricity on the same number of acres, I don't care about that.
Thirty and ten, yeah.
That'd be fine, yeah.
I'm, 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 I'm people, my thoughts are more liberal than what, what, you know, especially when it comes to setbacks and distances. But I'm willing to be convinced that, you know, I'm not, I'm not close minded, I just, I, when you start talking about sixteen hundred feet from a house, or or it just sounds ridiculous to me.
That was our wind ordinance.
I understand, I know, but I just, I, I, this special use permit versus, versus what, conditional use permit, or what's what it was?
Special use, conditional use is more or less the same terminology.
And that does what?
And that's the Board of Adjustment who grants those.
So that basically means anybody that would be above this would have to go to that Board of Adjustment to get a permit to build?
That needs to be defined, or if the board supervisors would like to, uh, do all the work and make that decision, then the ordinance should be written, so the board supervisors make that.
Board supervisors, if you go on final approval versus the Board of Adjustment, is what you're saying?
Right.
Yep.
The first the introduction to the wind ordinance talks about the significant long lasting impacts and the county board supervisors believe it's in the best interest of the supervisors retain the final authority over the issuance of the wind, uh, project, so. That decision, you know, if, if you want to just write it so, uh, the Board of Adjustment approves of it, that's, that's a process, and there are wind energy projects that are approved that way as well, but Cassou County chose to do it differently.
I probably, I, again, uh, a twenty acre sounds like a lot of solar panels to me, and thirty sounds like more, I, I, I thirty and ten, but I heard the part about increasing efficiency and anything above thirty acres, but that certainly isn't very restrictive, I don't think, so, so I don't have a problem with that at all, is what I'm saying. Maybe your setbacks, like I voiced, is a differing opinion about some of that, but I would, I would think that not getting approval for something smaller than thirty acres or ten megawatt is, is, uh.
Yeah, but that'd be for an entire project, not just per landowner.
Well, and. Yeah, and that kind of goes to the point of how restrictive are we being, I mean, if there's a community solar project that's being developed and it's got support of community members in that area, these restrictions wouldn't even apply to that, so, um.
I don't, I, I, then it comes down to definition of community solar versus.
That's what we're defining.
That's what we're trying to define, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't even see the, I don't see the need to, to, I don't count it a differentiation, whether it's if it, if it's above this size, it's gotta, it's gotta go.
I mean, I'd compare it to someone, whether it's building a solar array at their hog facility, or Gold Eagle that I already said, or a community solar development, and I, I don't think we have any of those real close here, I don't know where the closest one would be, I don't know if anyone knows that, but, um, I have heard there has been interest in that, and I do have landowners in my district that are interested in that, but that's kind of under that threshold, um, that I was talking about, so I'm not as concerned about something like that versus a project that spans five, eight, twelve hundred acres, that just covers sections upon sections, I think that's a different category.
But that's gonna get you, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to get a permit to do that, right?
Well, that's what the ordinance is.
That's what the ordinance is.
But, yeah.
And that's, that's where I did.
So anything over, anything over ten megawatt or thirty acres, you know, I don't, I don't see differentiating between us, between utility scale and, and community. You know, if, unless the, if the community scale is bigger than that, they, you know, if they're gonna have to abide by these rules, I don't, I don't see giving them any special.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be just based on their name, it would be based on the acres and megawatts.
Right, right, so I, I don't, I don't see why we're getting hung up on community scale versus.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is define what the utility scale size is, so then that.
I don't care, I don't want to define that, I should define what you want to regulate, what you don't want to regulate.
That's what we're trying to define.
Don't, don't, don't give me three different definitions.
Yeah.
And if it's ten, thirty, let's, 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 let's decide what it is, and we're batting around eight different things, I think, okay? And again, I'm, I'm willing to listen, but tell me what the difference is, you know, what, what are you trying to do, you're protecting the current landowner from something you consider intrusive, that's fine, but that's the same thing, whether it's utility, 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 individual, or community. So what, what's your limitation gonna be, you know? And again, I'm willing to listen, tell me what the difference is, but, uh, I'm willing to be convinced, I hope invited about it.
I think in some regards, I would compare it to like, say, feeding pigs, if you want to have a hundred pigs on your farm, there's not a regulation for that, so to speak, but if you're building that confinement facility where you've got twenty four hundred head, or forty eight, or multiple buildings, that's, it, it hits your different thresholds, and I mean, the master matrix is what ninety eight out of ninety nine counties use, but that does have setbacks from occupied residences, and it is, it does consider step up based on quantity, so, I, I mean, I don't know if that really answers your question or anything, but that's one thing I would compare it to, is withdrawing that line of quantity.
Yep.
And I think that's eighteen hundred feet from the occupied residence, but you can get a waiver to that as well, I mean, for the master matrix, so. Where it's sixteen hundred feet or whatever, it may sound like a big figure, but, um, if you, if you have ways in there that it could be negotiated or agreed to, that you can change.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm reading less than, uh, reading what they say is pretty typical for setbacks for solar and residences, and it's typical a hundred to two hundred feet.
Is that on the Iowa Environmental Center for Rural Affairs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a hundred to two hundred, so I mean, when we're talking sixteen hundred, that's, that's kind of a big difference, I mean, that's even six hundred is a big difference, I.
That's a heavy lobbied or, heavily lobbied organization too, but.
Yeah, that's.
I get it, I get it, but it does also say the fifty foot property line setback is included in a number of ordinances, they're talking about ordinances themselves, they're you know, um, and we had talked about a fifty feet um, buffer from, for the property line, so we're not off balance there, but it, like I said, I, I am just not for setting this so tight that it's going to restrict people from doing it. And I, I have had people say they would really like it, I haven't heard, I mean, maybe you guys have. I haven't heard a ton of negative about the solar, like I did the wind. Of course, in the wind, that was a different role, but I still heard it, I'm not hearing that with the solar, are any of you?
Some, not like, not like the wind, but, yeah, I've heard some.
You're better negative? Okay, what are their, can I ask, what are their, what are their concerns? Because maybe I'm just missing a concern, you know, I, I haven't heard any concerns.
I'd say the concerns usually what I hear is the, the noise, the glare, and turning prime farm ground into solar panels and, and the view, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's gonna be your common complaints.
Right, but. Right, but like it's the person who owns the ground, they're the one, they're the one not getting.
I know.
The production from that field anymore. It's their field.
And to Kyle's point, you, you build a hog building, that's your ground. You're taking prime farm ground out of production. And doing something else with it, getting a different sorts of income out of it, and yeah, it's your ground, but there's still some regulations there. I mean. Yeah, I, I understand, you don't wanna tell people what to do with their land, but then we might as well not have an ordinance. I, I, I'm just, I mean, why, why was the purpose of even going through it then?
Well, I'm saying what's the purpose of having an ordinance if the ordinance is to prevent people from doing it? That's, that's kind of my point. The point is.
That's reasonable practices.
That's a reasonable practice to do that? Is that what you said or am I, did I just misunderstand that?
Well, I, I said, I said the ordinance for making it reasonable practices, yeah.
Yeah. Well, absolutely, but I, like, so my big thing is to make it not so if we're going to go through. Having this ordinance, we're trying to see both sides of that. Not to restrict it one way or the other, have good practices, but not to restrict it one way or the other. I guess that's where I stand with it. I don't make, wanna make it so restrictive that we just as well say no solar. That's my point.
And I don't think having a thousand foot setback with a waiver is gonna be so restrictive that nobody do it either, but. I guess, I think we, we all have different opinions on this board about it too, and that's fine.
It is, it is, but I, I mean, like I said, why go through the trouble if, if we're gonna make it so there's no solar? Why don't we just say, hey, there's no solar? That, that's my.
Do you have a different recommendation on that setback?
No, I guess I was leaning more towards yours. I mean, honestly, the thousand, I think is too much if the, I mean. Somebody had once had six hundred, I thought that was too restrictive. Um, honestly, I don't know how restrictive three hundred feet is, um, but.
What do you think of a city block? It's like, what, two hundreds and feet?
Football field is what three hundred feet?
Football field is three hundred feet, yeah.
So I mean, that's where I'm sitting with the, the residential setback. A dwelling, a house dwelling, and then of course defining.
Yeah, yeah. We, we need to go through that with the pipeline ordinance. How do you define this and that and the other thing?
You know, another way to look at it too is if you went to the three hundred feet and you had the screening as, as, you know, some sort of requirement that, um. That if they're, you know, close enough to that three hundred feet that they do need to have some sort of screening, I mean, think about that. You're standing at one end of a football field and you look over and you just see a line of trees. You're not gonna see solar panels. I mean, that's. I mean, that's something to consider too.
I was just gonna show. That, that's, that's a, just a image, just so you have an image in your mind of what a. Smaller scale, like your community solar project kinda looks like. We're talking a little bigger, but, but just so you get an image from like the road, I mean, that's fine. That's down at Grinnell College.
I'm not opposed to something higher than three hundred, I guess, um. With the ability to do a waiver, I think that sets the tone of the communication, um, and we haven't talked about it yet today, I don't think, but. Um, requiring community meetings or, um, some form of discussion or information phase. I think could be valuable, I mean, whether it's pipeline or anything else, there, there are requirements for public meetings in that regard, so.
So, the Green County ordinance does have a section in there for, um. Community information, open house, um, and they have several sections in there kinda discussing what the purpose of the open house is and. And the, um, says here at least ten days prior to open house, um, for notification. Um, set a date, time, location, things like that, that, that they have spelled out in there, and I, I liked that portion of it, how they had that. Kinda defined in there for doing an open house or, or, you know, the public meeting or, you know, something that the public can come in and, and, you know, require that notification. Be sent out and asserted a long time prior to the meeting.
Who do you send, who do you send it to?
Says in here, all property owners within one thousand feet have a proposed utility scale, um, system. I think that's pretty standard for notifying. Thousand feet.
You did, you would also need a notice in, according to. Public notice or meetings laws as well, cause it. I mean, that, that's part of zoning, no matter what, you, you've gotta have a notice, you've gotta have a public hearing, um, so.
You have to have a public hearing if it, if it exceeds your, or if you're doing anything.
And it's, well, if it involves zoning, you've got to have public input and you've got to notify adjacent to a certain extent. That's, you put it in a paper, the, the planning of zoning, the, is going to hear something about a zoning change. You put in the paper that the Board of Adjustment is going to hear.
I appreciate that.
So, so it, that's just part of zoning. You've gotta have public.
Right, but if, but if we craft an ordinance and every, and somehow somebody. Somebody, uh, and I heard you say, you know, you might require that they do this if it's above a certain point too, right? You're saying maybe the same thirty, ten thing, if you're above that, you have to, you have to have.
Well, that would all fall in our ordinance. Our ordinance is defined by if you had thirty acres or ten megawatt.
Right.
You are now following this ordinance, and that's part of the ordinance is that notification process and.
You're gonna do this.
So, so that'd be one of those things if, if I have a hog building and I wanna put up a half acre worth of solar panels, you wouldn't, you just wouldn't go through that process. You just contact the company, you build them and hook onto your power source and call it a day.
And even if there isn't an ordinance, I would still encourage people to, you know, at least give the heads up to their neighbors and stuff too.
And.
You know, that, that, that's just counter courtesy stuff, but.
But yeah, we would, I mean, pending to whatever outcome we have here, that's, that's what we would be setting is what threshold hits those.
Which sometimes isn't.
What threshold makes it to follow all the rest of the requirements.
And you're talking total for the whole project, for the whole solar project, not a firm one, it's total.
Lower for a project.
There still is a compliance component. If, if somebody with a confinement operation chooses to put up solar arrays, they. Should be going through the zoning administrator to see whether or not it complies with zoning. It, whenever somebody makes an improvement on their piece of property. Whether it's putting on a garage. They're. They're supposed to get compliance from zoning. Does it happen in Cassou County all the time? No, it does not. So I would be concerned if people make statements that say. This, you don't have to do anything, you just go build it.
Right, well, I.
Uh, Gold Eagle went through a process. A lot of people have went through processes with, uh, with confinements, with agriculture, with residences. And some of them needed to go further to, they just, they were not complying with zoning, so they did get a variance, variance to the, to the ordinance. So, and you gotta be a little bit careful there with statements too.
Well, and I wasn't meaning just build it. I was meaning that this ordinance and the discussion we're having today wouldn't apply to that. Cause that's what we're here to discuss today, or what this would apply to.
But I, I do, I mean, I, I, I would, I would first tell you, I didn't realize that, that there was, you know, that, that anybody, like I. I, I, I've never built anything out of the county except the Grange, and, and I didn't realize, and it's been twenty-two years ago that it's that, but I didn't realize that there was a. I was supposed to contact somebody to ask.
That, if you refer to cloud it, that is definitely an agricultural use and that is exempt.
Will that change? Okay, alright.
But that's the state bio code.
Okay, alright.
You're okay.
Come and get it.
Take you into.
Yeah, you, you drive into some counties and they, and I don't know why they, you know, they want to count your zone.
Right.
And that, that's kinda putting up a notice, you know, I, I, I just, I guess I'm ignorant, ignorant.
Well.
Ignorance is the right word, right?
No, I don't think that's aware.
Okay, I agree, you know, that, what you said, I agree, you know, you, you still gotta comply with what's out there now, you know, no matter what you're doing, you, and you, so. That, I, I didn't just interfere, but it's like, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if somebody has a, a thing. In their backyard, it's, I don't know, fifty feet tall and forty feet long. Do they apply, do they ask anybody if that's okay? Do they ask?
I get the phone calls.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. And that's, I guess that's probably what you should do. You should call and make sure you don't have to.
I, I used to get the phone calls, I just put it that way.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, it sounds likely, so, so what, I think maybe, you know, to progress, we gotta tackle these one thing, things one at a time. Come to an agreement, you know, if we, if we've come to an agreement on ten and thirty, fine, that's nailed down, that's the definition, uh. Below that, you know, you can put, you can put, below that, check other local zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
Refer to local zoning ordinance or whatever.
Yeah, setbacks, we oughta be able to come to an agreement here, well, even if we don't all agree, we oughta be able to come to a, something we can live with, so.
I mean, are we in agreement on thirty acres and ten megawatts sites?
What it sounds like to me.
I'd be okay.
Can be okay as well.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not trying to be.
No, I.
Super restrictive on smaller projects and stuff like that. I think it's just.
Well, in all sense, the smaller project still has to comply with.
Yeah, and your comment to if a community solar gets up to that size, then you start to question, are they really trying to be a solar or a community solar project?
Yeah.
Or are they trying to be a utility scale project?
Well, and maybe, maybe in ten years, the standard community solar project size will be fifty acres, who knows, but right now, the number.
Well, that, that type of, the ordinance can be adjusted.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's reasonable starting.
Yeah, yeah, we need to set the solar ordinance to the standards that they are today and not what they're gonna be ten years, you know.
Well, and, and once we have that defined, then we know all the other setbacks and stuff we're talking about, we know what that applies to.
May I to bring up the moratorium? Uh, the first item on the moratorium is that, uh. Several entities interested in constructing large scale and in parentheses, i.e. greater than twenty acres or utility scale. I.e. energy produced is primarily intended to be distributed to electrical power grid for use by the public. Instead of getting hooked up with the area in the megawatts, I think that utility scale where the energy is going to be. Produced and.
Put on the.
Put on a grid somewhere for other people to be using instead of. An individual or a community where that primary purpose is to.
Certain.
People that are consuming the energy at that solar power there.
So you're basically suggesting that we do thirty or ten megawatt and the intention is to hook on to public?
I'm saying not use area or megawatts, but say where the primary. Intention of the whole power plant, the solar energy is to put it on a electrical power grid and is distributed to the public. And that's what we're really looking at is a, is a power plant here.
But I think even community solar projects will connect to the grid for their transmission, it's not running new lines out to everybody, so I don't. I don't, I don't know if I would completely agree with.
And there's.
Well, then what is, what is, I'm sorry, I don't understand what a community solar project is.
I have talked to community solar developer and they define it as. Between twenty-five and thirty acres, as we're saying, um, of a maximum project area. And, yeah, and I asked him, I said, so is this electricity going, say, directly to my house? Or, or is it going out into the grid? And he, and he said, I mean, it's just, it's just power. He says, there's no way to track that power. It's just, once it goes into grid. It's just part of the, the general electricity of the grid, so. So I, I don't know how, what we would define as this is going to my house versus this is just going for the public use.
There, there are other community solar projects too that actually will sell some, the energy back to the, the grid. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And also the panels, when they're producing electricity, if they're not using it.
On site.
They're not using it on site, it goes up to be used by others.
Well, and that.
Which, which refutes the whole AC DC argument too.
So.
Well, and that, I think that makes a gray area.
But. But the primary purpose.
Yeah.
Is to put it up onto the grid, not to necessarily feed. A personal use.
I think, I think it'd be easier for.
And that's your decision, but you're gonna have to have somebody, you're gonna have to have somebody interpret it.
Well, yeah, I mean, your average person out there walking down the street is gonna understand. I mean, I would understand it easier. It's a lot cleaner if it's a acres and megawatts or quantifiable things. If you have a primary purpose. It gets into gray area to some degree and.
Yeah.
Cause I think it opens up more room for discussion or debate, I mean, I, and you could, you could look at that a hundred ways, I mean. Acres and megawatts are too hard fixed things, it is.
Is it? Yeah, that brings up too, that if someone puts up a, some, you know, small solar, you know, project on the property to power their hog confinement and. They are, you know, selling back some of that excess energy to the, now do they, would they fall under utility scale and then would that cause them to not want to do this? Because they would fall under that ordinance? Cause if they're saying, you know, if I'm.
What's the primary purpose of it?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, you know, if, if you're, if you're putting up to use it when you can use it, everybody, it's all going back. It doesn't bleed into air. Everybody's is going back to the, so, so, I mean, either way.
If it's put on top of a roof of a home, it's not stored somewhere in that house right now.
But then you have to look and say, well, what's the typical consumption of that? Are you?
No, you don't. You just say the primary purpose.
Okay.
Don't overthink it.
Oh, that's right. I think it just gets into more.
And it hasn't been used by this Board of Supervisors to. It's been used as a definition.
For other things or for this?
For the, yeah, for a moratorium, that's what the definition is.
Yes, right, okay.
Which I think the moratorium was in front of the ordinance to, you know, it's time to craft the ordinance or the final version of the ordinance, I think is.
We don't have to keep with the same definition.
So. Is the board wanting to keep that language of acres and, and megawatts? Or is the board wanting to go to a definition of where the power's going or, or use of the power, I should say, is a better way to put that? Just don't know how you can fully define that, but.
Sounds like a lie I've heard before. I don't like that. I'm not a lawyer, you know.
We're gonna have to.
You know, I, 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 I don't, I don't care. You know, I, I, I don't, I don't care.
We, we can, we can send it to the lawyer and see what he thinks too, I mean, that.
And this isn't a final product, but it, product by any means.
Is that what we wanna send to the lawyer is really what we need to know?
You can put it in there and say, hey, we considered this and we considered this, what's the better way to go?
Right, and that's the point of sending it to the lawyer, cause he's gonna know how to, how to word that the best, but.
I assume you're gonna, I don't, I don't know, who drew up the moratorium, was that some, was that a boilerplate something or did we do that?
Cause you tell your attorney?
Yeah, Todd.
Does Todd gonna be the one that decides?
I have no idea.
He said no, he has a conflict and his personal side is what.
Yeah, he needed the moratorium for us to save money, it was fairly simple, but.
Okay, right. Well, we've got a whole list of things here, we've got a hundred foot from a tile, three hundred foot from an open ditch, we want something about airports, definition of occupied residence, information on permitting. Decommissioning plan, road use and repair agreement, uh, twenty foot height, security fence, screening, fifty foot buffer from a property line. And the thirty acres and ten, ten megawatts as a definition of a utility scale project, that's what I have written down.
How many feet from open ditch?
Three hundred.
Three hundred. Correct, those are just numbers pulled from the wind ordinance.
So I think what we need to do is come to a conclusion on, you know, some agreement on our setback from occupied residence.
Yeah, I think that's the only. Was there anything else that anyone had a concern about?
I had a concern about the battery storage portion of it, did you have that written down?
Oh, no, I didn't. Well, what, what, I guess.
I, I don't know, because there's nothing recommended in, in, um, the ones that I looked at that could be different for.
This again is worrying about the future, right, cause nobody's doing battery storage now, is that right?
You have to have a battery storage of some kind, uh, for a, a solar project, right?
Solar panels aren't producing energy through the night, so you have to have some.
I don't, I don't, that's required.
It's not required, a lot of them are starting to pair hand to hand type thing, or even.
So it's, that's current, so that's not agreeing for the future, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's current, uh, we have no battery energy storage projects currently. But I know Alliance has a few and there, there's the energy companies in the state to have them, so, yeah.
But you put a half dozen panels on your roof or you put half dozen panels, panels in your backyard, you don't have battery storage with that, is that, acres that wrong?
Depends who you are, how you set it up.
Set up, yeah.
I got friends that, yeah, he's got a whole shed that his batteries are in it.
We're, we're not looking to set an ordinance for those people that have their individual setups like that, we're looking to, because this is a large project. So obviously, it's gonna be a large storage area for, for the batteries.
Yeah, and that's where your quantity would differ, like, I mean, if you put a couple solar panels on your roof or whatever, your distribution lines. That come and serve your house can handle that quantity going back out, I think, so I mean, just the, the volume of electricity, I think, is what makes a difference there, but.
So I, uh, just it's hard, it's hard for me to believe, I'm sorry if I interrupt you, I'll, but it's hard for me to believe that there, there isn't already a, a best practice thing that they're gonna follow. Just can't believe we have to reinvent the wheel and, and say, we're gonna, you can't put it here, it's gonna drain everything, drain, almost everything drains somewhere through a tachyon or, or, or fall.
My concern is a containment procedure, you know, if they have it built into the facility that allows it to contain it if there is a battery leakage. Versus having something that's sitting up on the ground.
And again, you think, I'm asking, I'm, I'm open to listening, I, you, you don't think there's something out there already that would regulate that?
I'm sure there is, but are they gonna be required by just their plans, is that a requirement by their plans? Or is that something that we need to have to protect our land?
Yeah, I guess, I guess I.
Maybe more research needed for that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, when I was zoning administrator, I was approached about, um, battery. Facility being placed at one of the wind farms. So. I would make sure that it is not tied directly to solar, but it would be. Its own regulation.
Own section, so you're saying something separate from solar and something separate from wind?
I think it would be in the best interest to do that, yes.
There's no state rules out there now, like, we don't have rules.
I mean, there are.
We don't have county rules for fuel tanks, but there's state rules for fuel tanks.
Correct.
There are things like that for batteries.
Not that I'm aware of. There are some.
Uh, if we could just.
For all of this, actually, that have passed.
Can we could done.
My understanding, so it might be state rules for all of this.
Yeah, another couple of years.
Just a couple of months.
Yeah, well, I have no faith in the hour, I just like.
Why do you say that?
Yeah, I, point well taken, but. Okay, so, we gotta do something for battery storage.
Well, right now, I have told the people that were inquiring that they could get a conditional use permit. Because there, there's no rules really for it at all, or against, there's no more.
Yeah, yeah.
And there are.
Yeah, I think you're right with our current stuff, we don't have any, just as I.
And that could be something for the future, maybe we don't include it in the solar ordinance just for the time being, maybe we do need to draft something separate up for battery storage facilities.
I would do it at the same time.
Do it at the same, so you're saying include it with the solar?
Well, just.
Have the same public hearing and the same.
Don't make it, don't, do not tie it to solar energy.
Okay.
Get the rules, but make it stand by itself, give the rules for.
That makes sense, yeah.
There's only a handful of counties that have a battery energy storage system, uh, ordinance, but a lot of them just have it. They have it built in with their solar ordinance, but it's not just specifically for solar, but rather than having just a whole separate ordinance, they draft it all together.
Is that, is that something then that we would potentially need to amend the wind ordinance to add that portion to it?
Not if it's, not if you're just dealing with battery storage, battery storage would be. Or if somebody built a natural gas. Generator, if the legislature decides to come up and build a natural gas, you know, power plant, they might decide to. Put some batteries up for that for some reason, so they don't have to run as much natural gas or something, I don't know.
Oh, that makes sense, okay, um, so then we're back to setback.
I'd like to, yeah, if we can come to an agreement on the setback, then we can, just maybe we can be done with the discussion for the solar today, cause I think then we have a good list. If, I mean, that kinda where we're at?
I think so, I think we've made progress.
Right, well, definitely made progress, and then, uh, yeah, um, for setback. I mean, we've had three hundred foot and we've had a thousand foot, so.
You're talking about from a residence now?
From a residence, from an occupied residence, however that gets defined, but.
Well, and the Green County has six hundred, so. Is that something we could look at as a, you know, to come to an agreement on?
And that's six hundred without waivers, I was saying with waivers, so we could do six hundred with waivers.
I don't know, I think that's just a huge distance, I mean, when you think of the length of the football field, things do.
Well, I figured.
That's a long ways away and, and you, you got to start to think, how's that going to affect them that far away?
But you're also only talking occupied residences, you're not talking every property line or.
No, I know what we're talking about, my, my comment stays the same, I know what we're talking about, that seems like a long, that seems like a long ways, but, you know, that, I'm, I'm giving that for my opinion. I guess we gotta reach a consensus. Howard, what do you think?
I'm gonna find a visual for you.
What kind of pipeline?
I've got, I've got maps for what that looks like.
Cause I, I can have that in my head too.
There we go, just so we all have a visual what this looks like.
You have a staple?
There's, there's multiple different variations of.
This one, that's a six hundred and sixty foot setback, so it'd be close to that six hundred. Well, and there's, there's double that if you wanna look at it.
Everyone might forget what's these, the red.
The circle.
The red circles is a six hundred.
The little, little red circles, yeah. That's the six hundred and sixty.
The dot in the middle of the house and then the red circle around it would be six, sixty in all directions. And this is thirteen, twenty. These were produced when we were talking about pipeline, so we've seen them before.
I've got half a mile and eighteen hundred and fifty feet too, but I don't think we're gonna.
No, no, that's, that's.
Yeah, I just remembered I had. Came in handy, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't.
I guess, maybe if you, if you embrace what my opinion was, and, uh. Captain, obviously thirteen, twenties a quarter of a mile, six hundred and sixty is obviously half of that, uh, so if the person got an eighty, he's not gonna be participating in something like this, you know. If there's a house next to him across the road, cause he'd be halfway across his eighty acres before, or his arc would be, you know. Six hundred and sixty sounds, I will, I'll be against that, but that's just one person, I, I'm thinking something in the three hundred and thirty would, it'd be what I would be.
Sixteenth of a mile.
That's, that's my, that's my thought, Russ, I, I can be convinced, but.
Well, I was thinking three hundred, so I could do, I could get on board with three thirty.
I mean.
Seems like plenty of opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're talking, I mean, if you're talking, say, an eighty and that distance, like, for them not to be able to do anything, you'd have to have houses all the way around it.
Understand, but.
But if you're allowing waivers, they could, can, I mean, they could get waivers from all those landowners and still go through with their project.
Yeah.
People are gonna, people, yeah.
Depends who they are.
Yeah, and I think that's where some of the, depends on how it's presented to them. Some people would be more receptive than others, obviously, but.
I'm not gonna be happing up and down mad or anything like that, you can, you can sit there and mumble about the possibilities all day. If, if you, if you, if you propose six sixty and we vote, I'll say no, but if three of you say yes, I won't walk away mad, I'm not gonna hold a grudge about it. So I'm just, that, there's a, there's a defining moment for you.
I'll, I'll second that, move on.
I don't want the other way either, so.
I'm, I'm not opposed to six hundred, I could entertain other numbers too, but I'm not opposed to that.
Josh?
I originally threw out the three hundred number, but it, it gets us closer to an agreement, I would say the six sixty, or do we wanna do six sixty? Saying that's an eighth of a mile, or do we wanna do just six hundred?
I don't dare yet, right?
That's a long ways away from your three hundred that you said.
Wow.
That's a long ways away from your three hundred that you said.
If we have to come to an agreement though, that's typically how you do it, you meet in the middle, but that's.
That's obvious in the middle. That's my opinion, beauty, you know what, you have the floor, you go ahead, you go ahead, but.
Are you guys thinking three thirty without waivers?
I guess I haven't given that a lot of thought.
I haven't given a little.
You know, I need to tell you this from medium, the middle is four ninety five. And I mean, so, so I'll, I'll vote yes if you say five hundred feet with waivers.
I support that too.
Five hundred feet with waivers, I'd be on board with that.
Those are three votes.
Well, that, again, we're still discussing.
Yeah.
Are you looking for a motion to come to a consensus?
We don't, we don't need a, we don't need a motion on that, cause we don't have it as a decision for these.
So is that, is, is that, is that a happy compromise?
Five hundred feet with waivers, I think so, Amber?
Doug, is there any, is there any logic to the whole change and, and, and the, the six sixty, the thirteen, twenty, the three thirty, the four ninety five? There's no logic to that as far as rules are concerned, you can set any distance you want. You have, you, you have a thought about the far, concise plot? And logic behind it? Okay, alright.
I mean, we've got every, other things that are a hundred foot, fifty foot, three hundred foot, so three, five hundred foot.
And this is just the start, you can put it in as this, and then if, say, we get.
I just had the same thought.
Some pushback, we can readdress it.
I mean, if, if it goes through drafting of any attorney, we can change the number from five to six hundred, that's not a legal question, that's an opinion of the board, so. Either, either way, I mean, yeah, changing numbers.
I'm, I'm here in five hundred foot with waivers, so you got that down, okay, so.
That's a place to start.
Okay.
That's a good start.
Alright, end of discussion for on that topic today?
I'm good with this, yeah.
Um, do you guys wanna break and come back, or Tammy has some brief stuff for us for budget?
Well, brief is brief.
Well, I, basically, it's everything you pretty much already saw, seen, except for just, um. The changes that we made for mental health that we talked about last week and just you looking at the fund balances.
Thanks for coming up, Doug, Jacob, have a good week.
So, it, it's, it's however much time you wanna take, it can be a minute, it can be however much time you wanna talk about it.
I mean, we kind of concluded going through things last week and.
Are any different other than the mental health and?
Yep, and mental health is, um, basically just splitting one third of the advocate.
Right, right.
So, and that's. So otherwise, um, the fund balances are all in your packets, you can look at them. We'll go forward, I'll create that sub fund and get it submitted.
The only thing, I have no issue with what she just said, but were we going to talk about the fair at all?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
But I mean, is that, it's twelve thirty, is that a?
We can come back, that's fine.
I, I don't care either way, but I'm saying that should be discussed.
Are you talking about changing that before the budget gets done?
Or are we talking about changing that in the future?
No, I'd say leave the budget as is, but.
Then we might not have to talk about it today then.
Okay, cause I, I have, I mean, I do, you know, yesterday raised a lot of questions for me, it doesn't have to be talked about during budget and maybe we just need to talk about it during. I don't know if it needs to be on the agenda or for discussion, but I have a lot of questions, um, as far as the TIF and how everything was put together. And I, I guess I really want answers to my questions on that, um.
Okay.
And my concerns.
Yeah, yeah, is that something that you would like, our, um, the, uh, North, is it Heartland Securities?
Heidi.
Heidi, is that something that you would like Heidi on, on the lineup?
Um.
Consultant or?
Yeah, financial consultant.
They have attorneys there too that help prepare.
For revenue over twenty years.
Um, I have concerns about the, you know, the fairgrounds in general and the, not necessarily fairgrounds, but the grandstands and how that's going to work as far as the money. You know, and the revenue bonds, I, I have kind of an all over the board concern, so not certain she can answer that, but, um.
Our attorneys would probably be the ones to answer.
Well, that, and what about NIAH, like, NIAH, why, why aren't they involved in this? They're supposed to help us with following the law and the regulations and the. They're supposed to help us with following the law and the regulations and the everything with the TIFs. So I, I wanna know why they weren't involved in this discussion.
I think the person that was at Nyakog isn't there anymore and.
Yeah, but they have, but they've been replaced.
But when we went to update the stuff that we already had in the books, we used the same law firm that we currently used for the new update. So that change in who did that was already done before this project was even talked about.
What change?
The change in who our legal counsel was. We're not, we, we did not use Nyakog for this update.
Well, and that, I was present during both of the things with Buffalo Township or New York, the, first of all, the, the Buffalo Township when we did the TIF and then an amendment, and both times we had legal counsel and Nyakog involved in both of those processes. And they worked together and they worked together with, um, me as the auditor and the board at that time. And there were things that they balanced off of each other and made changes to different things to make sure that we were within the law and regulations. My question is, why, why didn't we use Nyakog in that process this time?
I don't know, Nyakog had anything to do with it, I guess, to be honest.
Yeah. Pretty important piece. They're our council of governments. And they, they are an important piece, and it, it was a combined effort. And I, I, that's why I had kind of concerns with that, that they weren't even part of that process. Alls I wanna make sure is that everything's okay with it and before going forward to anything. And, and I think that's an important piece since we are being, you know, asked by the Fair Board to come up with a dollar amount. But I have my questions about that entire process, first of all. And, and so I wanna make sure my questions are answered before I start thinking about a dollar amount. I mean, and that is what I stand with it.
We probably should have that conversation with our attorneys and, and.
And you guys weren't in on the conversation with the attorneys and with Northland and, and all that. So I, I think that would be helpful to have that conversation, yeah.
Right, cause you know, I've seen everything, but I still have my questions and.
Yep.
And my questions of how it's going to work with the revenue bonds and who is the revenue bond attorney we're going to use? Is it both, you can use Dorsey and Whitney or you can use, is Alers and Cunia revenue? You know, I, they both do it. I, I kinda want, I, I don't wanna cost the county money, I, I mean, by, by answering my questions, but, um, I, I have kind of done a little bit of research and they said you can either fall in the gray area or the black and white. Well, um, for county government, I guess I like to stick with the black and white. So, um, right now, in my mind, there's things that are gray area with us and I want them to be more black and white.
Understandable.
Yep. Do we wanna reach out to Nyakog and see who exactly there would be involved with this? I mean.
It's a gal who's been, um, who's the, I guess I don't remember Joe Meyer's title, but, um, I think there's a gal now that does that.
Yeah, I think you're a, well, Myrtle now since the.
There you go. That's what, Myrtle.
Yeah.
Myrtle.
So, I mean, is that something we wanna put on the agenda to, and then see if both of them would possibly be available to, I don't know.
I think we should just put it on the agenda and record it and make sure.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying.
It should be an agenda item in the future.
Schedule it with them and then put it on the agenda once the time is set.
I think so, cause I think there's, you know, just definite questions to how we go about giving this money and, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I do, yeah, thank you. So. You know, because Myrtle will probably want the agreement, you know, she'll probably wanna look at it prior to, so she understands what we're, what we're asking, you know.
You're a Nyakog delegate, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay. So, not next week, but maybe the following week, because probably, I mean, next week might be too soon for them to.
Too soon, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it doesn't even have to be two weeks, but I mean, I know we are, I know the Fair Board wants an answer from us. I don't wanna prevent that, but yet I.
See what their schedule's like and.
Want my questions answered.
Well, I was gonna.
Two weeks for meeting with an attorney, that would.
Say that again.
You're, you're wanting an agenda item to meet with an attorney?
With our attorney for us, or? With them and Northland, or to meet with Myrtle, or?
I guess I, what's the difference between Northland and the attorney?
Northland Securities is the company that we do the bonding through.
The financial piece. Instead of doing Nyakog, that's what they did.
And they. And they do have attorneys there.
Okay. Is there a reason why we did that? Is there a reason why you went to Northland? I mean, cause I don't even know what Northland is, obviously, before today. I didn't even know that was even a piece of that.
I mean. I mean, I talked to people there and people at other counties at our ISAT conferences. I, I know several other counties that use them and have had projects completed with them involved. So I guess that was just.
They're at ISAT a lot.
A resource, a resource that I was available of or aware of, um. I don't know that there's a big debate of one versus the other, but.
I don't remember there being a debate at all.
I don't think there was.
Is Nyakog free to us, or these people charge?
Nyakog is free to us.
But they don't do bonding, do they?
Well, yeah, but we haven't officially done any bonding.
No, we haven't, um, so they haven't, they haven't charged us anything.
They're, I just think Nyakog.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't, they don't charge us like a consulting fee or anything. It was, it's their resource to go to the bond market if we need to down the road, but they didn't, they didn't. We never paid them a dime yet, so.
I guess I'm looking at Nyakog as, you know, our, they help us follow all the rules and regulations, make sure every piece is, you know, accounted for. And I would, I guess I would like to know their opinion on things. You know, and I can call Myrtle myself and just ask, you know, some questions, but I don't like doing that.
I don't like that either.
I don't either.
You know.
Well, how about, how about this? If you wanna reach out to Myrtle and tell her what your questions are.
But she's not gonna know the answers, cause she hasn't been working with us in any of this, so she's not gonna have any answers.
Yeah, she has, yeah. That, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. Tell her what your questions are, so then that way when she comes in two weeks or whenever it's scheduled, she knows what your questions are, she can have some pack to prepare instead of waiting till that date to answer a question.
Well, yeah, I mean, I want it to be a productive meeting.
So are we expecting Myrtle to come to the?
Can you email me like the, the agreement or whatever, the urban renewal amendment and the projects and all of that that was?
Yeah, it's all in the.
Just so I have, it, so I have it and.
Yeah, if you wanna send it out to all of us, maybe while you get the email, cause I'll save that on my computer and then, like I saved it before from the packets.
And, and you, we don't have to spend any more time on it than that, cause I have all my questions counted down, but I, I want some time to understand and know that. That all was really pushed through super fast, and so I have my concerns and I want my questions answered before I agree to any.
That's why I was suggesting, that's why I was suggesting to reach out to Myrtle and let her know what those questions are, so then that way she can come a little bit more prepared.
Well, maybe first you should talk to the attorneys you guys worked with, to have them answer the questions and then decide.
Cause Myrtle's not gonna know anything about it.
Yeah, cause Myrtle's not gonna know anything about it, and then, then if they can't answer those questions, then obviously you need to look somewhere else.
Yeah, I mean, we did engage legal counsel for this, so I guess.
Right, and we did last time too, with, along with Nyakog. So that's, they were, they were involved. There are, you know, they, Nyakog is our friends, and I'm calling Nyakog, they're our council of governments, there are different ones, but they are ours and they, they're supposed to help us with rules and regulations, and I know they were heavily involved. And without the conversations with Joe Meyer being the last time we did it, I don't know if I would've done things accurately, that's the truth. Very helpful resource, very helpful resource for you as the auditor, who's gonna be balancing all of this, so.
No, that's, that's good and, and, uh, but as far as, I guess just trying to conclude things here, it also is.
I'm cool with that.
You know, we'll, we'll definitely continue that conversation, cause that'll affect future budgets, uh, but for our current budget.
I have a quick question, and I don't know how quick, and I don't know how, I'll come back, but if, if somebody wants to quit and I, I'll. So it was mentioned yesterday, Kyle, that, uh, you know, Pow- or Hancock County was going up this, this amount. I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but did you say something to affect, you wouldn't be surprised if our, if our taxes were to go up that amount also?
I, I hadn't seen that sheet, which they were talking about, is it eighteen, nineteen percent on that notice?
So. Right, but.
And ours, ours are fourteen and fifteen.
So I, I guess I gotta have an explanation for that. So our general basic is limited to three percent growth. Not, not necessarily the levy, but just the, the tax asking is limited to three percent, right?
The, the confusing part of this is it assumes a ten percent increase in valuation, so.
The, the fifteen percent is coming from, if you're looking at a property value that's at, I don't even, even know if it's a hundred thousand or a hundred thousand.
Hundred.
That property value is gonna go up, like for us, fifteen percent. That's not how much your taxes are going up.
Right, there's still a lot of.
That's the value on that property is gonna go up that much.
The general basic funded asking cannot go up more than three percent.
But it's not, no, the value can increase more than three percent. You, you can't, it's not.
You can't levy on more value than three percent.
Right, yes.
Correct.
So, um, our levy on general basic and rural basic is less than last year.
Right, I understand that because, because the valuations are going up. The levy itself is going down, cause the valuations are going up.
Correct.
But is the, so if you can. I don't wanna put words in your mouth either. You, you can't levy on more than a three percent increase. Is that what you said? So, so, and, and in that context, if the levy's going down, then, then we're not gonna increase, the, the, the tax asking is not gonna be going up by more than three percent. Is that, is that incorrect, or am I wrong? On, on for the general basic, only talking about general basic, not, and then.
No, should. I'm not following your logic.
And then the supplemental, we're talking about going from a dollar sixty to a dollar seventy, is that, but we get to use all the valuation increase too? So there, the, what's the answer to that question? How much is the tax asking in, on general supplemental gonna go up? I mean, it's gonna go from a certain point to a certain point, and we know those points.
It depends on the property value, so.
But we know those.
Just a general supplemental, if you, if you look at the budget fund balance and. So if you go into the folder, the fund balances and then the budget fund balance or cheat hall funds. If you look at general supplemental, you can see the, um, twenty-four, twenty-five in the middle. Column, general supplemental property taxes for two million, six twenty-six, six forty-five. For twenty-five, twenty-six, that's budgeted is two million, eight ninety, two seventy-two. So that's your increase right there is from two point six to two point nine.
So it's two hundred and sixty thousand increase, it's about a ten percent increase.
Ten percent increase in supplemental.
Yeah.
In, in the one fund, and if, so, so I guess, and this is not a cautionary tale, but if, if somebody was gonna ask me what the total tax asking is gonna go up, at least for us, I can't speak for the cities and schools, but if you combine those two together, uh.
If you, if you look at the, um, the notice where it shows those percentage changes and stuff, the, um, second column from the top requests the Tax College Countywide Accept Debt Service.
Where are you looking at? I'm sorry.
Proposed budget report.
Yep, the proposed budget. It, it shows our current year certified property taxes, nine million, six oh three, six seventy. Now we'll wait till.
Okay, go to, go to that, um, March fourth, two thousand and five, have to click on it. There, so right here, since March. And you, you have your, and your budget, how come yours looks different? Okay, proposed. Now proposed tax levy.
Yep, notice.
There you go.
Yep, so that, that second line has the current and the budget year effective, and then the proposed one. So that shows the difference from nine million, three, six, seventy to the proposed has ten million, fifty-seven thousand, forty-one dollars. So total tax increases about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Anything I said wrong, entertain me?
No, that's correct.
So then, and that's where it, then your comparisons down below there. If your assessed value goes up ten percent for both of those examples, then your actual tax bill that you pay would follow those same percentages that are laid out. So if your value goes up ten percent and you're a urban taxpayer with a hundred thousand valuation that goes to one ten, your actual taxes paid go up fourteen percent.
But for dollars, it's four point four seven percent.
Yeah, I, I got four point six percent.
Or whatever.
That was, that's a little rough remiss, but, but, but that was countywide, that had nothing to do with urban taxpayer, that was, that was our total tax. That was the, comparing the nine. Oh, okay, so that was comparing the nine million, six hundred and three thousand to the ten million, fifty-seven thousand, where I got the four point six percent. But, but again, it's gonna vary amongst where you live and what you do and.
Yes, correct, and whether your assessed property goes up and, yeah. Because people, when they ask those kind of questions, they wanna know how it's gonna affect them.
Right.
And there's no even way to say how it's gonna affect them, because you don't know how much property they own, you don't know what it's valued at, and you don't know.
The simple answer is we're asking for four point six percent. We, this group right here is asking for four point six percent more from the county taxpayers.
That's how I understand this.
Total dollars, yeah.
Total dollars.
And that's, it is what it is, I understand, I, I can see where somebody might have a problem with that, but, but it, it just, things cost money, they do.
Well, I'll be good with how things look then.
Yeah, it's time to nail it down.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure, I mean.
Give Tammy the final blessing.
Hopefully the people who are complaining like me amongst them, holy cow, what is this? Richard learned their lesson last year, had to get too excited about it, but.
It, it's, and it was new last year, so that's why it was hard to understand and it was hard to explain, so.
Yep.
Well, the thought process behind everything is to not have a room full of people.
Yeah.
Right.
Because we've made really good decisions.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
We shall see. Well, um, we're gonna talk about fair stuff and the TIF stuff at a later time here. And otherwise, as far as the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget is concerned, we are done. We're moving forward with the process, then, done with discussion on it.
Okay, so I don't have any concerns with anything that we've put in.
Okay. Go for it. But alright, well, I'll take a motion to the jury if ready. Motion by Garmin? I'll second it. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion is unanimous. Thank you all and.
So you assume the next week's department head meeting will get moved?
I'm assuming it will. I'm not sure how many all of us, how many of there, of us there are, but I'm assuming it will.